Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are now ready to begin this afternoon's workshop. Today's workshop includes five agenda items. One, orientation process for new board members, 35 minutes. Discussion about meeting times, 15 minutes. Process for selecting resolutions, recognitions, and invocations, 60 minutes. A break. And then, fifth, the agenda review for tomorrow's regular board meeting. Before we begin, I just want to read a little disclaimer. Today, we will be discussing the process on how the board will move forward with selecting resolutions. We are not addressing a particular resolution or issue today. We're planning a comprehensive workshop on LGBTQ matters for the future. In the interim, as I shared at our last meeting, as a board, we do believe in diversity, we do promote inclusion, and encourage equity. We, with a unified voice, proclaim our commitment to anti-bullying and harassment, as noted in Board Policy 4.14. We, the board, reaffirm our commitment to the prevention of bullying, harassment, and any discrimination based on color, ethnicity, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identification, gender expression, disability, physical or mental, pregnancy, marital status, age, religion, military status, socioeconomic status, linguistic preference, genetic information, ancestry, or any other legally protected category. We have an undivided commitment to supporting our students and staff, and will provide a positive and safe learning environment where all are welcome. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. McClung to lead us through the orientation process for new board members. I also want to mention that Ms. Patrica has called in, and she is unable to make today's workshop. Thank you. Ms. McClung?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, madam.
Hello. There. All right. Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins, Ms. Thomas, and Attorney Dupre Bruno. It's nice to be here today. I'm hopeful that this actually won't take the 35 minutes for the orientation of new school board members. I believe everyone has had an opportunity to review the current orientation process. I had asked board members to send me any changes in process that they were interested in. I did receive a couple of changes from Mrs. Morgan, and so I'll show those in just a moment. But just quickly go through and highlight the process itself. So as you go through, you'll see that there's a lot of information that is provided in links to board members around Florida school laws, the Board of Education rules, school board policies, bargaining agreements, and so forth. Then, the current process is that the superintendent and school board chair take on the bulk of the orientation process if there is a newly elected board member. They'll review basically all areas of the district, the departments, and the policies and processes that go through that come before the board. The board chair would then review protocol with the board members. We also generally do a protocol review during our pre-reorganization meeting in November. And then, the board attorney would set aside time to provide legal information and answer any questions. Some suggestions for that more in-depth introduction to the budget and finance components be discussed, including the procurement process with the bid processes included in there, bonding, including COPs and contracts. Also, a meeting with the chief and the board attorney to review the agenda for the first board meeting prior to the agenda review workshop, just to orientate the new member to that process. So let's start with the in-depth introduction to the budget and finance components. Any discussion around that?
Ms. Gittens.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Does this include our -- I know there's different departments that are mentioned. Does this include our internal auditor?
Probably does not. As it was -- we did not have one last year.
I might suggest that since the internal auditor, and the attorney, and the superintendent are all our employees, that those be separate meetings.
Board members, is there agreement around that? Quick thumbs up? Looks like there is. Okay, thank you. So I'll add the internal auditor and a meeting with that person to that orientation process.
And may I? I think Ms. Gittens is referring to the board internal auditor.
Yes.
Not the --
Yes.
Okay. Yes, the board internal auditor.
And I'm just thinking back on when I was on board. And I don't know how we can -- what suggestions necessarily to change it, but when you're going to visit all these different departments, I don't know if it could be somehow narrowed down, because unless you've been around and involved in some way, the questions to ask may kind of elude you at the time that you're sitting in there talking to that specific chief or director. So perhaps they can come up with, like, basics of what you really must know in order to do this. This part is really important. And all of these subsidiary things under that can come later. But when you're sitting there and you're going from department to department, it's, you know, you're kind of saying, what do I need to know right now in order to do this job?
Do you have the suggestions around what some of those items might be?
See, I would -- I had mentioned this a long time ago, and I really wish that somehow, if you're running for this position, that you would have to -- not have to, but watch board meetings. Watch a board meeting, watch a workshop, watch a briefing, at least one or two of each. And when we're talking about the procedure and the process as to how that goes, it's right there in front of you to see. And some people are, you know, visual learners, to be able to see rather than someone, you know, telling and telling and telling, that maybe that could be added in there.
I believe that there is a line in here where it says that minutes to prior meetings would be provided. Perhaps they could also be provided with the links to some of the prior meetings, the YouTube links.
The link more so than the minutes. The minutes are just very kind of an outline of what happened, and it does not capture a lot of the meat of what happens. So -- and I'm just speaking from, you know, having done this, that it was a wealth of information to watch or attend board meetings.
So we could add that we would provide links to the board meetings and encourage new members to watch.
Examples of briefing, workshop, action meeting, because like Ms. Morgan was saying, you know, there's certain protocols or whatever. So you can see the protocols and then also watch this particular meeting to see how that works.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. That's really hard for -- I think that anyone who takes on a position for school board, county commissioner, whatever that may be, it would behoove them to be prepared when you come into this role, like you said, watching those meetings and doing that. So that is definitely on them. There's no way -- I don't think we can put that in here, though, to force anybody to do that prior to being elected. But in saying that, too, where the one part where it says superintendent and school board chair shall provide newly elected -- the comprehension orientation. I know when I came on, I was scheduled that. I don't think the board chair -- I did have the opportunity to sit with the board chair. It was offered to me to sit and have conversation, which I, you know, was very thankful for. It was Kathleen and Ms. Morgan. And, you know, so I kind of had, like, the questions. And as Ms. Gittens says, we never know what the questions may be until we get into the depth of everything, and then they come to, you know, our minds of, oh, gosh, we should ask this question. So I think that -- I don't know how the board chair -- I don't know if they should be on that, because I think the superintendent, I think somebody scheduled that for us. It wasn't the board chair who scheduled those meetings for us. And I mean, I did have the opportunity to meet with all of them, and it was a lot, a lot of information all at one time, for sure. And as, you know, as it progressed, then you, you know, were able to go back and, you know, I remember you saying this, but what the heck did you say to me? You know, and then getting that information fresh in your mind. So I don't know if the board chair should -- I don't know if that needs to be there. I don't know if it needs to change, but I don't think that -- I do believe that it was the superintendent who made that happen for us.
Mrs. Morgan.
Yeah, I would just say that Dr. Atkins and I had a conversation about it beforehand. And since it's his staff, it really, you know, I mean, apart, we talked about what the content should be, but he did all the organizing, so.
But I do think it's good to have the board chair speaking to -- and then also, there's other board members, too, but I'm saying that that is, to me, it was a great help having that, you know, conversation, as well as Ms. Susan. I mean, Susan and Mary, they were, you know, a wealth of information.
Absolutely. Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, two things have come to mind since we started talking. Number one, and all of us still struggle with this from time to time, is communication. And I think that's a learning curve. You know, do you send it out to all the board members, or who do you send to? You know, going through the superintendent for certain questions. And some of it becomes very basic to us now, but somebody just coming in, that really is a learning curve. And for some of these things, if we have, like, a little cheat sheet or a, you know, something that's just a very -- an abridgement of everything that people can look at quickly. And I seem to recall that when I met with the different departments, I think some of them had their own little sheet that they provided, not all. I think that would be great. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts around here. And just to kind of, you know, I know the organizational chart is a work in progress constantly because of changes, but just, you know, I mean, from finance, just, you know, and I see Ms. Morgan put about the budgeting finance, you know, what is procurement? What do they do? How do they fit into the big picture? And kind of a little Cliff's Notes version of their department, I think, and maybe even a separate on their sheet, a little diagram of, here's the chief, here's this, and this is, you know, that kind of thing. I know it's on the website, but when you have an avalanche of information, sometimes it's just good to start with your basic notes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens.
I would like to ask if, let's see, if you're a director or you're a chief, and you have a new board member coming on, the question to me would be, what do I wish all board members knew about what I do and what my department does? And sometimes, you know, there are things that you guys want us to know, and we don't quite understand. So leaving it up to the departments or whatever to say, if all board members knew that we do this, and this, and this, and this, it would really be helpful in the future when we're having these meetings and talking. So leaving it up to the departments and the superintendent to come up with what I want every board member to know. That's good.
Thank you.
Board members, any other comments?
Okay, I was just going to say that looking at the organizational chart is helpful. Some of the graphs and pictures, like, for instance, when looking at budget, there's that circle, and it shows the percentages of what goes where. Some of those things that are really more the bulk of it and the overview, because truly, I mean, I feel like it took me almost a whole term to really be able to fashion my questions, because they would come up when an issue would come up and come before the board. So -- and I think that what the chair and other board members can do is to, if there are new board members, to welcome them on and try to help them navigate around the building and, you know, those kinds of really simple things, just to acclimate. It's a lot at one time. And so I think an overview and the access to where the information is is great. And then, of course, meeting the people in all the departments. So I thank you, Mrs. Morgan, for your suggestions.
Ms. Jordan.
I was also going to say, too, and I didn't see that in here, but -- and because I was on an FSBA meeting last week, and one of the members on there had said that he did not go to -- we went to on new school board training, which was really, I thought was, to me, it was beneficial for myself, so I can learn what exactly is that role, what is it that we are, you know, here to do, you know, and just everything about that, which was great to me. And listening to a board member on the meeting last week and saying he did not -- how sad he was that he did not attend that, which made him more confused. And so he wished he had done that, the new school board meeting, or members. So I just want to say that that, to me, was definitely an eye-opening, as well as, you know, to our role, as well as, you know, sitting with Ms. Morgan and speaking with everybody else here in the district. I mean, that, to me, was a benefit to me.
Ms. Jordan, can I -- may I ask clarifying question? Was that training provided by FSBA?
Yes. We actually, we came on, and I think within that same couple of weeks, I think we were, like, there, maybe two weeks after.
Right, it's the winter, December. The December conference.
So we were there for that weekend, you know, we had the classes there, which, you know, as I said to myself, it was a benefit.
So your suggestion would be that where it says additional information for new board members available on that website, and maybe put something like including information on new board member training? Just add a -- make it a little more specific there?
I think that would be a great idea. I mean, I think it's invaluable. In every election cycle, they do provide that opportunity, and for new chairs, et cetera.
Right.
Ms. Gittens.
This may be something that, you know, one of you wants to take up with FSBA, but since they are on here and one of the organizations that you look to for all of the rules and all of that, if they could even maybe have volunteer board members throughout the state that would be on a list. So when a new board member comes on, that they can select someone as a even temporary mentor. And I know that mentor process, well, I won't go into the details, but to be able to have a list to say, you know, as a new board member, you can call this person if it's prior to a training or prior to the conference or whatever, here's someone if you have a question that you can call. So I don't know if you would want to present that to FSBA as a, you know, like a temporary type mentor program.
So just this morning, I communicated with Larry Feldman in Miami Dade, who's been my mentor for 10 years now, and on and off. But that was part of the new board member training that I experienced with FSBA, that we had an opportunity to say whether or not we wanted a mentor. And so -- and I think it's been invaluable. I mean, it really has, even -- and you can talk to another Florida school board member who's not in your district without fear of violating sunshine. So that has been a very valuable tool for me personally. But, Ms. Jordan.
What I was going to say, Ms. Gittens, that has been conversation in the past couple of weeks regarding mentors, and how do they make that better, a better experience for people who come in there? And, like, I call it hand-holding, you know. I would like for somebody to, they could have taken us and said, okay, here you go, here's -- and introduce us to the people that they already know, especially those who have been there for quite some time. And just make people feel really, really welcomed and know that you have that other person, as Ms. Fisher just said, that you can always have them to call or another counterpart to call if you have questions. So they are definitely working on the mentoring and, actually, what is it that a mentor does and how do they do that? So they know that that has to be tweaked as well, and that has been conversation lately.
And if I may say, I kind of see it as two parts. There's the permanent mentor, like Ms. Fisher says she's had for years, but I'm just talking about someone, because maybe you are a new board member, and you call this person, and you really just don't click. So to think that that, it creates a real issue to try to change that. So what I'm talking about is just a temporary, here's a list of people that you can call. They don't necessarily have to stay your mentor for however many years.
Oh.
But just, if you have a question, you know, a little bio about them or whatever, and you can call. I mean, I have people now I call in different districts that are not my mentor, but I get more, there's more interaction with them than there is, you know, with the mentor. So I'm just saying a temporary thing, that no one feels obligated, but it's there if you have a question.
But that's the beauty of having that organization, that you can have those phone calls. So that's, yeah, thank you. I'll definitely bring that forward to them.
Thank you. So if that will go forward to FSBA, what we'll include in the protocol is just the reminder that that training is available. And also, I believe there is some FADS training that was specifically for board members, but I've not been able to find that link, so I will look for that and add that.
Yes, I was, you weren't able to find that link? Has anybody done the FADS ethics training?
I'm going to. I haven't done it yet.
Yeah, well, the FADS ethics training is really, really well-done, and they use a case study process. And so I think I suggested to you that we incorporate that, because there's a good discussion about, generally, just school boards and school board members and their responsibilities and their lines and whatever. So, yeah.
Yes, I searched. I couldn't find the link, so I'll get with you, and we'll find it. Thank you.
I probably have it, if you know.
Great, thank you.
I think we have it. I think they sent that with FSBA for the ethics training.
Yeah.
Yes, so we have it.
Okay, yeah, so I'll get it from someone, and I'll include that in here as well, just so that we have that referenced.
They did. They sent a link for registration, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, the other item that was suggested was the meeting with the chief and the board attorney to review the chief attorney and board attorney to review the agenda for the first board meeting. Any discussion around that item?
Could you repeat that, please? To discuss what?
To discuss the, to review To discuss the, to review the agenda prior to that first agenda review workshop. I think that the suggestion, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was just to meet with them, to talk about that process, to look at the agenda, to see if they had any questions before going into that agenda review for the first time.
That's a good suggestion. Go ahead, go ahead. I think she's married. I do have a question, and I don't know if this is-
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
That's okay. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring it up, or if it comes up later in discussion, but I really do think that considering the situations that occurred recently, that somehow the board should be able to see at least the draft of the agenda before it goes out to the public. And I don't know, I brought it up because you mentioned that about new board members, but I'm not sure where that fits into our discussion, but I think it needs to be discussed, that we need to at least have some ability to see what's going to be on the agenda before we're, you know, bombarded with comments from the public prior to a meeting. So Cindy, I don't know when we'd bring that up, but...
Ms. Morgan?
I want to get back on task.
Yes.
So I'm the one who suggested that we do this. And I do think that sitting down with the superintendent and the board attorney before that first meeting, any new board member, would help clarify the process by which these items appear on the agenda, who is responsible for it, sort of general questions they might have, as opposed to the kinds of questions we ask when we're going through the agenda itself. That was, that was the purpose of that suggestion.
Thank you.
Is there agreement on that, to add that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand you.
I'm sorry, is there agreement to add that?
Can you repeat?
Just to check with Mrs. Javonelli, did you have anything?
Does, I mean, it has to be a preliminary agenda, right?
We do.
Yeah, but that's not-
No, we don't, we're not on that.
If we could possibly discuss that at the board reorganization meeting, because we'll need to work with Jen Schaefer and the superintendent and see what that process is exactly and see when that draft agenda is available.
Well, that was my question initially, when would we discuss that? I wasn't trying to get off topic.
No, I understand. So we're just having a little quick, when would be the best time? And if, if it pleases the board, if we could bring that to the board reorganization meeting, that'll give us a little time to look at some options for that.
Can I add something else, too? So-
Yes, ma'am.
Something I had asked about is the board docs. Is there any way to have our policies put on board docs? Because I know that they have a, there's a drop-down box for that. And I have asked about it earlier, and I don't know what the process is and how to, and I don't know if anybody else agrees with me, it'd just be easier to be able to find it one place like that. Because I really like board docs. Does anybody feel?
Ms. Fisher, you have a special.
There is a way to put the policies on board docs, and that's a project that's being worked on.
Oh, okay.
As you can imagine, it's going to take a little bit of time to get all of them up there, but that is a goal that we have, is to put it on board docs.
Manually be put, you can't just upload it on there?
No, it's a different system to system.
Oh.
So it's not, it's not, it's not as easy as that. There is a process, but we're working on it.
Awesome.
Ms. Schaefer is working on that.
Okay, I didn't know. So I just didn't, I just didn't want to be the only one to be asking that, so I didn't know if anybody else had a-
Ms., I will just add, also, Ms. Schaefer and I work very closely together with regards to the agenda. So I'm very certain that there's a way that we can probably come up with a draft for the board to review. So we can come up with a process, and I agree with Ms. McClung, that we should discuss that at the reorg meeting.
Yeah, and the only thing that I can add is that I had two mentors, and neither one of them kept up with me from FSBA. So, you know, it does need to be tweaked.
Great, okay, Ms. Jordan?
I was just going to say, I agree with Ms. Morgan, that that would be a great idea, because that would have been helpful to me. Because not knowing what, exactly what was taking place on that first one, even though we have the agenda review now, which is really great, but coming in and being at the first meeting going, what in the world? So, thank you. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. And if we could have a quick thumbs up, if you're in agreement to add that process?
Ms. Fisher, I just want clarification. This would be a meeting between the board attorney and the superintendent to review the agenda? I just want to make sure that I'm clear as to what it is.
I wasn't sure what the statement was.
Right, Ms. Morgan, right. For the new board member to meet with the superintendent and the board attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fisher, can you please just have someone repeat what it is concisely, what she, you know, or Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I just, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, if you'd like, I'll just read, and I know it's hard for you to read it up there. It says that a new board member would meet with this, it says chief, but it would be the superintendent and board attorney to review the agenda for the first board meeting prior to the agenda review workshop.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Board members? Okay, thank you.
Other, those were all the suggestions that I received. If there are no others, we'll add these in and we'll get the revised version back to you.
I just have one clarification, one question. Under policy development and maintenance process, is that going to be something that falls under the board attorney to do?
Should be, I would think.
Under finance department and budget development process?
That orientation, I, I'll defer to the chair as to how that was done before. Did you meet with each, did you meet with each department?
I think that the board attorney and sometimes designated staff were the ones who made sure that we were in compliance with updates statutorily and maintained the rotation to review policies in a timely fashion. However, we have many policies that have not been reviewed or updated for several years at this point. Yes, Ms. Morgan?
A comment was made at the last meeting, and I chatted with Attorney DePree Bruno about it. In fact, this board did an entire review of the policy manual sometime around 2014 to 2016. Every policy was reviewed. The problem is that the policy manual does not say the date it was reviewed. It just says the date it was put in. Rob Dotick was given specific direction to update each policy showing when it was last reviewed, and that was never done. So I don't want people in the audience or in the public to think that because a policy is labeled, you know, last looked at 2005 or approved in 2005, it's been reviewed more recently than that.
Thank you. Then that brings me to a question. Because there are so many policies, and some of them have been changed, how would we know that when we go to look at a specific policy and it says it was updated in 2013 or 14, how would we know it had been, if it's not on there? I mean, is there a record of that somewhere else?
I have not found any records of that. I mean, basically, at this point, it's just to compare the policy to the statute and make sure that it's updated.
And we appreciate that you're doing that. Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Ms. Javonelli.
Oh, Ms. Javonelli.
So you know how we have when it's adopted or whatever, that has a date, why can't we have a review date?
It's supposed to be there.
And then that'll help.
Yes, yes, some do, and I guess some don't.
At this point, Ms. Kennedy and I are working on that, and we have a spreadsheet that we've created that's going to log in all of the policies with the dates when it was reviewed, revised. So we are working on that process.
Awesome, thank you. Board members, any other comments on this issue?
Was your question answered, Mr. DePree Bruno?
I just want to make sure, because it says superintendent and school board chair, I just want to know whether or not the policy development and maintenance process discussion falls under the board attorney. I think at the, one of your workshops, when you looked at your procedures and your process manual, you moved the policies under board attorney. So I just wanted clarification as to what my responsibility was with regards to that.
In terms of this, I think it would be to provide the board attorney, I'm sorry, the board chair and the superintendent with just that process, so that they would be able to review that with the new board member. And then, you know, if you felt you wanted to be part of that discussion, I see no problem with you being part of that discussion as well.
Well, I mean, since the board attorney is the keeper of the policies, it would make sense for that to be the person to communicate with the new board member.
So there's already a part here, excuse me, while I find it, but there is a piece here that talks about the board attorney meeting. Here it is. The attorney shall set aside such time as necessary to provide legal information and answer any questions concerning school law. We could move the policy processes down to that paragraph and just take it out of the one up above?
Yep, that's it. Okay, Ms. Jordan?
I was going to say, you really don't need to do that, because we don't have, like, on the end of each one of these, operations, organization, and practice, we don't have a person's name on that of who that is, or any of the other ones. Human resource, we just know that that's what we are asking everybody to be oriented, go to orientation on. Whoever those, the people are, we don't have them listed. So it really, I mean-
Right, but we wouldn't have the people, because this is in perpetuity, so-
Correct. So what I'm saying is, so it really didn't matter.
People change, but the positions, and sometimes the positions change. So, yeah. So I think we have to make sure that we keep up with it, is, is the thing.
So the way it's stated now, the superintendent and the chair would meet with the board member, and they would review these processes that are here. Now, if they chose to invite someone else in, they could do that, but the way it's stated here is that they will provide a comprehensive orientation that includes those.
Right. And honestly, the superintendent currently, maybe, but this current chair, I would not want to be responsible for giving a comprehensive orientation on each one of those departments, because the expert in that-
Right. So it's past practice been that that person was invited in as part of that orientation?
Right, and I think that's part of what we do now.
That makes sense.
Is that the superintendent and his staff arranged to meet with the board members and give them information about their individual departments. Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
So maybe we should change the wording, then, to say the superintendent's school board shall coordinate with newly elected appointed school members for a comprehensive orientation to include, rather than making it sound as if they are going to do it. And the, I disagree with Ms. Jordan on not having, I see what you're saying about not having names, and I don't think we need to do that. But finance is pretty clear, it's the finance director, HR is clear, operations, technology, the only one that's not clear is the policy and development. And yet, that is and has proverbially been the board attorney, which leads me to the last paragraph. I think we should put, the board attorney shall set aside such time in that last paragraph.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens.
That's already up there. The board attorney will set aside whatever, right here, in the second, first paragraph. So that's already on there, about setting aside time. And it's- It doesn't matter.
I don't know why that's, then it's repetitive.
I mean, Mr. Dotick sat with me and explained that to me, and he was the board attorney.
Yes.
I think those are just a matter of clarification. So I'm looking at our time. So if you're okay with me taking this back and just rewording a little for clarification and bringing it back to you, if there are no other major additions or subtractions from this.
Thank you. Okay.
Ms. Fisher, can I just say one thing?
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
That if, I know there was comments about new people coming on board, they need to do their homework and all, and I agree with that. If this is something that is out there that even if we would, you know, share with people that are running for board, you know, congratulations on your opportunity, and if, since you're considering this position, we'll share with you something. Not that we're going to have them go through it, but if I had had this, then I could have followed up and I would have looked into finance department online and found out stuff about it. And the point being that, you know, it could make or break whether someone really wants to do this. The more information we provide, the better it is, the better members that we will end up getting in the long run, because they will be aware of what the position is. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. McClung, you want to move on to-
Yes, ma'am.
Meeting times?
Yes, and that discussion was about, I believe there were two items that were brought forward. One was about the number of meetings being held on a specific day, and the other one was about possibility of changing the action meeting time. So if you would like to lead that discussion, I will turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So then, on Tuesdays, oftentimes when we have a briefing and a action meeting, we'll have a two-hour lapse in between if we finish by four or before, and we don't start the board meeting until six. My question was, could we not schedule our action meeting a half hour after the briefing conclusion to utilize that time and do it earlier? And one of the considerations I had about that was that now our meetings are all recorded and they are available on YouTube. So I just open that up to the board for consideration. Ms. Gittens?
I would not support that, because one of the main parts of the action meeting is the ability of the community to participate. That is really one of the one times that they can. And it is already, you know, taxing for some people that work to be able to get here to make their voice and their opinion known. So I believe that was why the time is amenable to everybody, to give people the opportunity of all levels to participate in that meeting, even though it is, it's one thing to watch it after it's over, it's another thing to have my voice heard and be able to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I, I think this needs to wait until the reorg, because, you know, we had a process in place in 2018, and the new board came in, and they wanted to change the schedule. And so I think rather than make, you know, a temporary adjustment now, we ought to have a full-fledged conversation with the new board and set up a process for the year, so that staff, board members, everybody understands what's happening when.
Yes, thank you. And I was going to propose that we do that after, after the reorg, or at the reorg. The other thing I was going to say, just as a matter of consideration, was that our sister governmental agencies have their meetings in the afternoons, and according to their report, they haven't had any difficulty with people complaining about not being able to appear for public speaking or to give their opinions. So just that, that was it. But yes, Ms. Vaughn?
To have, to have meetings in the afternoon, that would preclude teachers being able to come in and voice opinions, as they often do, coming at the action meeting.
And that's an important point to consider.
Yeah, I would not support, I would not support that. And also, I know we haven't done this in a while, but I'm guessing at some point in time, we're going to get back to the performances that we have. And, you know, middle school goes to school till, what, almost like four o'clock, and we don't want to have to take kids out of school to come perform here. At least, I don't think they should. So I would be against the afternoon.
Thank you. Okay. And then Ms. Gittens had some input regarding the number of meetings. So Ms. Gittens, do you want to take the floor and explain?
Yes, and it kind of, it's a good segue, because depending whether we have a meeting in the afternoon or the evening, having the number of meetings back-to-back on the same day, especially the meeting that lasts the longest, which is, I mean, in the evening, which is the action meeting, I don't understand why we can't have- I don't understand why we can't have, on the Mondays, have our briefings and workshops as, and as needed if we had to, just prior to an action meeting, if we must have a briefing or something like that because of timeliness. But for the most part, not trying to have, it's very taxing, and to have meeting after meeting after meeting on the same day with the action meeting. So my suggestion is, and maybe it would wait until the reorg as well, but I just think, like today, we have, all day today, we could have had a meeting this morning and then one this afternoon, and been done with it, and not have to, you know, have back-to-back meetings tomorrow. And I know that was a question, because we did do it for a while last year, and I know it was a question that came up, but I really think we need to reconsider how we organize the meetings.
Thank you. And I think these are both good topics for the reorg. And board members, any other comments or suggestions?
I agree with, I agree with what everybody's saying, actually, so...
Thank you. Okay, Ms. McClung, you want to move right along?
Yes, thank you. So the third topic for today is to review the process that's used for recognitions, for resolutions, and for the invocation process for action meetings. So the attorney Dupree Bruno and I will sort of be tag-teaming this along the way. And we thought we would start with the recognitions. The recommendation for the recognitions is that the process basically stay the same as it has been, with the exception of, instead of departments or schools sending recognitions to Mary Reader, which was been the process before, that these, that this process would now go through board docs. Nothing else would change, the same guidelines would be in place in terms of if it were a recognition for performance, say, a student performance, it would generally be that they would place first, second, or third in a contest. So all those guidelines would stay the same. The only thing that would change would be the process, which would now be through board docs. Any discussion?
Discussion?
When was it that we last, we had this discussion, it seemed like it was last fall or whatever, because when we were sitting down there, we were talking about reading resolutions and who should read and all of that. And so we just, not long ago, changed it.
For the recognition process?
The recognition, reading the resolutions and all that, because there was an issue that came up. How long ago, or do we have?
So in October of 2019, you had a discussion with regards to the resolutions. The recognitions have not changed. The only thing that would be tweaked a little bit is to move it forward through board docs, so we have the tree that board docs allows us to do, so everyone that is necessary can review the recognition, and it can be something that's coming from the department through board docs versus the department sending it to somebody in the board office to move it forward. That's really the only change with regard to the recognition part of this.
My concern is, and I know you said we're not gonna discuss LGBTQ, but that's the most recent issue that came up, and the...
Ms. Gittens, I'm sorry, we're talking about recognitions now, like when people win state for...
So are we going to discuss resolutions at all?
Yes, but we were starting with the recognitions.
She's starting with resolutions.
All right.
Thank you. Recognitions.
Yes, because the process really hadn't changed for recognitions, there didn't seem to be any disagreement around that process. It's simply we're moving it from, instead of sending it to a secretary, it would now go through the board docs process.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, because I am having a little bit of difficulty, then all of the requests for recognitions will go through board docs?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Ms. Giovinelli?
So who determines the, like, who lets the board know about the recognitions? Like, who determines that?
So the recognitions have normally come from departments, and they would submit a recognition honoring a teacher or a student or what have you, and it would have been sent to Mary Reader and then moved through that way. I believe Susan Johnson would also have it, then it would come to the board. So the only change that we're doing is to move it through board docs, and then we would have the board secretary, probably I would be on that list, Latania would be on that list, to check off on that particular recognition. But normally, they come from the department.
There's a form that, that needs to be filled out, and it asks basically what the recognition is for, where it was received, some, just, and what it was about, basically.
And we'll also have, like, a little checkbox if it's for a student, to make sure that the parents are aware that, you know, that we have everything on file from the parent, and include that in the board doc process.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, if I may, Ms. Vaughn, and then I'll call on you, that historically, we did not have advance notice about who was being recognized. Our staff took care of that. And, you know, schools, having winners would, you know, apply and request that they be able to come, and they did. So we're in a little bit of a different situation, but... Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, just curious, are there general guidelines on the kinds of things that get recognized, like, certain, you know, I know there's some that are historical, and I know typically if it's through the foundation, and, you know, some of the historical, but there are a lot of contests, essay contests and things out there. So that's, that's why I'm asking the question, is there a general guideline on the kinds of organizations? You know, I'm not talking about this team, they're state champions or something, that's kind of a no-brainer.
And my experience has been that that has been our recognition process, that we recognize student successes, the recognitions.
Absolutely, but what, what kind of guidelines? I mean, you know, there can be all kinds of successes that may not fall within the purview of the, of the school district, something academic or athletic or...
Ms. Vaughn, I'm not positive, I believe you're, you're asking, like, sometimes we recognize, like, an essay contest winner. And Mr. Dupree Bruno can correct me, but I believe that we only recognize events that have been sponsored by the district.
Okay, okay. So that's, that's what I was, that's what I was getting at. I'm not sure that that's always been, been followed. And I know it was brought up a couple weeks ago about political things, and I've seen a time or two, and this is before I was on the board, where there were particular contests and the sponsors were, had a very, very particular political slant, and I think we need to be very, very careful.
And that may be a separate process as well as which, that we may need to look at, because some of the essays that are sponsored through the school may be sponsored by someone who may have a political leaning that, so that, that's a, that's a different process. But the recognition here is if, if it has gone through and has been won as part of a school contest, then it's recognized.
Yeah, one, one, one thing that I remember in particular was they had the young lady who won this particular contest to read her essay, and I know, I was appalled personally of what she said, and I kind of looked around at some people in the audience. Again, it was right before, probably in 2016. And there were some appalling things that, that were said, and, and I think we just really, especially in today's political climate, need to be very, very careful about allowing some of these things to come in front of us because it makes it seem like we're endorsing it.
So that's one of the reasons for it to go through board docs, because board docs will have a tree of certain individuals that needs to read over the particular recognition and sign off on it. So that adds another layer of protection. And my recommendation to the board is if there are certain concerns with regards to recognitions, if you could forward that to Ms. McClung and myself, and we can discuss that further at the reorganization meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
I'm just trying to clarify this. So the recognitions would then go into board docs, we would receive the board docs with these recognitions on there, and then we would make the decision whether we're gonna allow these kids or whomever to receive it prior to a board meeting?
No. It will go through the, just like you get your agenda, it'll be just part of the agenda. You'll be able to see it. It's more of an internal process versus it going to the board secretary to work on all of this. Now, it will be the departments going through board docs with the tree of individuals signing off on it before it even gets to the board to be placed on the agenda, if that makes sense. And then you will see it once you get...
Who's signing off on those? The department?
Yes, the department will start it and it moves through the process.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
So, two questions. One, based on what you just said, Mr. Dupree Bruno, so that is assuming that the board and someone else would see this before it's officially on the agenda? Is that what you're saying?
It won't necessarily be the board prior to, because in the past, the board did not see the recognitions prior to, so that was not part of our contemplation. It was basically, instead of it going, instead of a department calling the board secretary and say, we're gonna have teacher appreciation for so-and-so, it will go through the department, putting it into board docs, and then it going through that tree where the department head signs off on it, everybody reviews it, and then it will be added to the board's agenda like all of the other agenda items are.
Okay. The other part is, how do we maintain true equity in this process? Because, you know, you can end up having certain schools being recognized all the time. And I know you said it's based on district, district-sponsored events.
Yes, and generally, it's competitions such as when students go to state competitions. So often, it's not the school that's putting it forward, but rather a department that's putting it forward.
But can a school put something forward if they have their own school-wide competition for something?
I believe that they're district-wide. I mean, even if, even if a team goes to a state competition, unless they are, win first, second, or third place, then they don't qualify for the board recognition. So maybe we need to, to look, Mr. Dupree Bruno, do we, do you know, is there a specific policy around that? I know I've seen the form because I filled it out a couple of times, but I don't remember if there is a specific criteria around that.
And you understand my question about equity across the board, that everybody gets recognized at some point for something?
So my recommendation, I think those are very valid points that are being raised, along with what Ms. Vaughn said earlier. If you could email those concerns and those comments to Ms. McClung and myself, and they can be flushed out and vetted a little bit more during the reorg, and that will also allow us to have conversations with staff as to specifics.
Excuse me, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, so I'm thinking, as I'm listening to this conversation, Odyssey of the Mind, some schools have it and some don't because of the parent involvement. That's an example of what you're talking about.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so does that preclude other schools, then, from being recognized?
Yeah, exactly. So, do we want to recognize something that is parent-driven as opposed to district or school-driven, because those schools have those resources and other schools don't? And so I think that's a good...
Yes, thank you. That was an excellent summation.
Yeah, okay, great. We just need to tighten our language so that there's no hurt feelings, and when you let this one lie, well, if we have it in black and white, our criteria, then we'll avoid hurt feelings and so on.
So I think we're talking about two different things. The first thing that we were, that we started talking about is the process for actually getting the recognition onto the agenda. And that will now go through board docs, and I think that we're in agreement with that. The second process is, what is the criteria for something to even begin that process? So that's something that we will bring back to the reorg meeting, and we'll, we'll do a little further investigation on what that criteria is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
The second item is the invocation process. And I'm gonna turn that to the board attorney for some history on that and a recommendation.
So there are some cases that have come out that discuss invocation...
Dupree Bruno, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? I'll try to get a little closer.
Thank you.
With regards to the invocation, and I did submit a memorandum to the board in August with regards to those concerns. What we need to do at this point is to tighten up this process. The recommendation, based on the case law, was for the board members to not be the ones to actually conduct the invocation and open it up to the public to be able to come in. And we've used, at this point, we've utilized one particular source, which is board member invitation. We also have a comprehensive list of interfaith organizations that board members can also choose from. And I do believe that there is a application on our website for anyone else who would like to participate in the invocation. So the questions that we have for you is, how do you want to handle that? Because when you open this door, you may have individuals that are from various faiths, non-faith religions, non-religions, that may want to participate. And if they do, the board cannot tell them no. They have an absolute right to participate. So one of the questions was, do you want to continue with the invocation as you've been doing it? Do you want to move forward with a moment of silence? Those are the options, or not have it at all. Now, depending on which way you want to go, then the next question is, the process and the selection to make sure that we are in compliance with the law.
Ms. Gittens?
Having been a teacher, I would like to propose that we should mirror what is happening in schools, and for quite some time, the schools have had a moment of silence, and that's kind of been the edict for schools. And I think that to keep all the peripheral stuff from, from being discussed, that we should just have a moment of silence, as the schools do. That way, we don't have any issues.
Thank you for that. Board members, any other comments? Ms. Jordan?
I totally agree with Ms. Gittens on that.
Me too.
Absolutely.
Okay, looks like...
I'll live with it.
This is, this is Chris Patrica, can I jump in?
Oh, Ms. Patrica, I didn't realize you were gonna call in. Welcome. Please do.
Thank you. I'd really like to continue with an invocation that celebrates all of the faiths available in, or practiced in Lee County. That's my two cents. Thank you.
I'd like to ask Ms. Giovinelli why she did sideways.
Ms. Giovinelli, why can you live with it?
I actually agree with Ms. Patrica. I like, I liked, I like the having, having the invocation, so, and I like having the diversity of the invocation. So I, I'm not opposed to, I enjoyed having the rabbi speak and do an invocation, so, and I would like to see more of that, because I don't think that, I think that showing the diversity and the difference and the acceptance is universal, and that's who we are, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And that'll be some, Ms. Jordan?
But I think with the, the moment of silence, you can still have that. Everyone can then have the opportunity to pray or believe in whatever they are without anyone having comments on that.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Based on a situation that happened at our last meeting after the invocation is one of the reasons that I'm saying to, and if you're unsure of what I'm talking about, you can go back and watch the video, to avoid those types of situations. you can go back and watch the video, to avoid those types of situations. I just don't think we want to put ourselves, as Mr. Prebino had said, we live in a litigious society, and everyone wants their moment, and I totally agree. I wish that we lived in a country that everyone could stand up in, and we could continue to have community members come in. But I think that it's going to create more issues for us than not. And like Ms. Jordan says, during that moment of silence, we can still pray as hard as we did before, and that we should mirror what's happening in the schools. If the schools can't do that, I don't understand why we should.
Thank you very kindly. Okay. Any other comments on that? And that is something that we will email our suggestions to Dupree Bruno and Ms. McClung, and that'll be part of our reorg discussion.
Did you, for the record, Ms. Fisher, say the vote? Say the-
I, do we need to do that, Mr. Prebino? And did we conclude?
We took a consensus.
Can you hear me? Are you calling for a consensus on this?
I think she already did, but we didn't know Ms. Patrica was on, so I just think, for the record, we need to make sure that we have what the consensus was.
Is there, are there, was there enough discussion for the Board to feel comfortable in making a recommendation at this point? Yes?
Yes, I believe so.
So, I believe then, at this time, Ms. Fisher, you can ask for a consensus.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I, would be thumbs down on that.
Okay. Ms. Giovinelli?
But first, let's make sure what the consensus is. Is the Board seeking consensus on a moment of silence? Is that what we're-
That's my understanding. Board members, is that what we are talking about? Yes, okay. Ms. Giovinelli? A moment of silence, thumbs up or down?
I said I could live with it.
Okay.
But wasn't it, I'm sorry, you said it was a moment of silence, as we do in the schools, just have everything as one?
Right. A moment of silence.
Right.
Right. Okay. So, we have five in favor of a moment of silence, one can live with it, and one thumbs down.
So then, Madam Chair, at this point, does this need to, does the Board want it to go back for discussion at the reorg, or does the Board want to move forward with this consensus?
Okay. Board members, move forward or continue discussion?
Well, I think we should, Ms. Giovinelli is up for this week, and since it's tomorrow, perhaps she should make the decision about this week as to whether we would go ahead if you've already contacted someone, and then we start-
I have, actually, and they've accepted, so.
It would be my suggestion that she go ahead with that this week, and then we start-
Right, this will all, and this will all take place following the reorg.
Yes.
Do we want to resume discussion in the event that we have any, a new Board member? Members?
Just add it to the list for reorg.
Thank you, Ms. McClung.
Thanks, Ms. Jordan. You're welcome.
Thank you. So, we will add that to our reorg list as well. So, the final topic for this afternoon is looking at the process for the selection of resolutions. And again, we're going to be talking about two different processes. The process we're addressing today is the process itself for how it gets to the agenda. The process around criteria, we will bring forward at the reorganization meeting to talk about what that criteria should be, so that we're very clear on what types should be coming forward. So, we did send a draft process out for you to take a look at, which I'll pull up. We have had resolutions for many years, so we do have a database of historical data of resolutions that have come forward in the past. So, the draft process, and this should say draft across it, but it's not showing up as a draft, with, we would first look at that list of past resolutions, would present that during the reorganization meeting annually, and the Board can look at those and see, are there any that they would like to pull for discussion? And any member could pull an item for discussion. The ones for, that were presented as past historical data, those could be discussed at that reorganization meeting. Any additional ones that Board members would like to bring forward would need to be brought forward at least one month prior to the date they would like to see it on the agenda. So if there are ones that you already know, and you would like to bring forward to that reorganization meeting, then it would be appropriate to have that discussion there. Otherwise, they would be discussed at a workshop at least one month prior to appearing on an agenda. So first, let's start with that part, and then we'll move forward. Is there any discussion around that process?
You're saying on the top portion, not the options?
The top portion, yeah, we're not going down, we're just talking about how it would get to the agenda right now.
Ms. Gittens?
I'm sorry to keep speaking up, but it still, to me, goes back to the process. If it goes on Board Docs, when do we do this? When would we-
So, this would, you would get this list at the pre-reorganization meeting for the full year. So you would see the list for the full year in November. Then, if anyone knew of some in advance that they wanted to add to that list, you could bring that in November, or you could bring it a month in advance for discussion to be added.
Attorney Bruno?
That's the proposal. I think that will clarify things, and you will know way in advance what resolutions are coming forth.
Yes.
And just to clarify, the, when you say, "Any Board member may pull a resolution for further discussion at a future workshop," that's based on that initial list of all the ones that we are given, correct?
Yes. So, in November, you will have this list, you'll look at it, and you'll say, "I'm okay with all of these, except this one, I would like further discussion." And then, the group would come to consensus as to whether or not that would move forward based upon a criteria which will be developed in November. We do not have that criteria as of right now.
And can we add deadlines? In other words, like if it's at reorg, or when we start the process, as to when we would see the list again? Would it be the next reorg?
It would be at reorg, unless you have a new one, which would need to be brought forward at least one month in advance.
So maybe that should, oh, it does say reorg.
It does, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're finished with the top part, Ms. McClung. Thank you.
Okay, great. So then, once it is on the agenda, you have options around how it will be treated at the board meeting. So you could read the name of each resolution with a brief description of what that resolution's about, which is our recommendation at this point. Other options are that you could read none of them, they're just listed on the agenda. You could read the full resolution of all of them, which could be quite time-intensive, depending upon the number of resolutions on a particular meeting. Or you could choose which resolutions to read based upon Board-approved criteria. For example, last October, you talked about only reading ones that were regard, that were, was it race and ethnicity? Race and ethnicity. So you could choose which ones you're going to read. So we'll open that for discussion.
Okay. Board members, any discussion on the second part, the options?
Ms. Vaughn? I kind of like the idea of the name with the brief one-sentence description. We may come up with a few of the ones that, I hate to use the word "more important," not "more important," but "more recognized." I mean, there's some particular months that, I mean, you'll see on TV, and you'll see, you know, a particular one, but all those whereas, 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 that, after about the third whereas, I think we're losing the gist of what's really going on with it. So I kind of like the name and a brief one-sentence with maybe, if it's really one of those, they're all nationally recognized, but one that's really popularly nationally recognized, maybe considering wearing, I'm sorry, reading the whole thing.
Now, remember, all of the resolutions will be on Board Docs, so everyone will have access to the full document.
Right, that they can read the whole thing, yeah. Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
I agree with Ms. Vaughn. I like the first one. I also like the last bullet, because if there is something that is very specific, you know, let's say, you know, 9/11 or something like that, then we can have the opportunity to discuss whether or not it should be added. It gives us a little bit of leeway.
And that can be something that you vote on during the reorg. When you vote on your calendar for the year, you can pick which ones that you feel are necessary to read completely.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Jordan?
Does that not put us in the same situation, when we pick and choose which one we're going to read or not read? Because four of us like it, two of us don't, three of us like it, four, I mean, I think if we were putting ourselves back in a situation where it is based on how we feel and not, yeah, I have a problem with that one.
Reason for the recommendation to just basically give a blurb, a one-sentence for each one?
The blurb for the one-sentence, who's going to create that blurb?
Well, we will. We will create the blurb.
Okay, so someone would give us what that one-sentence looks like?
Right.
And so that would be the same across the board for whomever, for all of them?
Yes.
Which I agree, because we can't, to me, picking and choosing, that's just-
And then it pretty much evens it out for every single resolution for each event.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for that.
And, Ms. Fisher, if I may, Ms. Jordan, I agree with you, because it does create more issues, and we all have the opportunity during our comments, if we want to say something specifically about a particular one-
Absolutely.
-then we can do that individually, if that's something near and dear to our hearts.
Absolutely. Ms. Morgan?
I agree with Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Okay. So then, Board members, we are through the second part of options.
Hold on, please, if I may interrupt, Madam Chair.
Yes, please, Ms. Patrica.
I think this puts us back in the situation we were in last year, when a Hispanic group came forward and asked us to read the resolution, and we said no. And it created significant hard feelings with a large demographic of our community. I don't think that reading a blurb would be sufficient when a group comes to us and says, "Please, read the resolution." So I'm uncomfortable with a blurb. And I'm also uncomfortable with what Ms. Jordan said, which is picking and choosing which ones to read and which ones not to read. If we have a rule in place, and we follow the rule and we don't violate it, and I feel like the past year has worked, read the resolutions aloud that celebrate ethnic and racial diversity. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Jordan?
I just want to make a correction on that. I did not say-
Right.
I said, "We cannot, cannot pick and choose, because that would be bad for us. We would be in the same situation." So I just want to clarify that. And I will rephrase the word "blurb," that probably was not the right word to use. So, the, a descriptive of-
A descriptive sentence.
Thank you.
Okay. So, and we'll make the final decision at the Board reorg, based on, yes, based on the appearance of potential new Board member and Ms. Giovinelli?
So, I think some of the concern is exactly what entails a resolution. And I think that, you know, I looked up the definition of a resolution, and it's a firm decision to do or not to do something. So I think that in our resolutions, we need to make it clear exactly what this district is going to do in support of the resolution, and what that action plan is, and what, actually, what does that mean to families and students in our community? So, I think it's really important that people understand what the plan is. And I feel like sometimes our resolutions have not expressed that. And so, I think that we need to make sure that there's a clear plan.
I agree with that. Ms. Morgan?
I think we agreed that we're going to discuss the criteria for resolutions at the Board Workshop.
Reorg, yes.
I think it makes sense to hold that conversation.
Till then?
Till then.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. No, I respect that, I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. As, Ms. Gittens?
As we are in transition, like we were with the invocation, are there any resolutions on the agenda this, tomorrow, that-
Ms. Gittens, we won't have any resolutions until the reorg and the Board has an opportunity to vote on which resolutions they want to move forward with.
Okay. And since we're talking about resolutions, I do have a question, since the controversial one with LGBTQ last time, are we, are you saying, then, that we are not going to address that one particular situation until we reorg?
We're not going to have any resolutions until the Board has an opportunity to vote on the reorg. With regards to the LGBTQ issues that were raised, and there are other issues that have been raised, we are currently working on a workshop that will be comprehensive, that will address everything from resolutions to everything else that the Board has had questions on. We will provide that workshop in the near future.
And it might be appropriate for me to give, and FYI, we had an EDAC meeting, and I have a report to give from the EDAC Committee, so-
I think that's probably for the good of the order, Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I'll be doing that in the good of the order. There will not be a motion of any kind, but they wanted me to bring certain things to the Board, and I will be bringing exactly the points that they made and that they wanted me to say. So, that'll be tomorrow night.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vaughn. Okay, any other comments?
The only thing is, Ms. Vaughn, if you want to, I mean, we have good of the order during the workshop, during the briefing, during the action meeting, so you can choose which good of the order you want to bring. If you want to bring it forth here, since we're talking about the resolutions, you're free to do that.
I don't have my notes with me. I was planning on doing it tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since there's still a little discussion around whether or not there would be, that you would choose some resolutions to read the full resolution, and we've said we're going to move that to the reorg workshop, the next option was, if you do read resolutions, who would read them? So I would like to postpone that discussion until the workshop as well, and then move to the last proposed part of the process, which is that no hard copies of the resolutions would be provided to any group or person during the action meeting, since all documents would be available on Board Docs. If they wish to have a copy, they have access to that.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, Ms. Gittens?
I would like to propose that we at least do a consensus on the following, to, number one, read the brief description, and number two, in the next section, have Board members rotate the reading.
And so, we decided that we would do that at the Board reorg in the event that we have other, different school Board members present at the time.
Okay, I thought she was asking for-
And, no, I was saying, I would like to move that until that time. I believe there was agreement that you would at least read the brief description for every resolution, and then possibly read additional ones, but since that discussion will be finalized at the Board Workshop, for the reorg workshop, then we could talk about who would be doing the reading at that time. That what I was asking for consensus on now was the not providing hard copies to anyone, that they would have access to those through Board Docs if they- if they chose to print it out.
Okay, Board members, agreed on that statement?
Agreed.
Okay, and Ms. Patrica?
One hundred percent.
Thank you. Okay.
That's one I wasn't worried about. I knew she was going to be paperless. All right, well, thank you. With that, we will move forward with the rest of the discussion at the reorganization meeting, and that's all I have for you this afternoon.
Thank you very much, Ms. McClung. We certainly appreciate your facilitation. And Attorney Bruno, thank you for your research and work in preparing for this. So, at this time, we will take a break, and we will, for 10 minutes, and then we'll resume the agenda review. Is 2:26.
Okay, it's 2:40 and we will resume this afternoon's workshop. Next on the agenda is the review of our regular agenda for tomorrow night, October 20th, at 6:00 P.M. And at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will go through the board agenda items. What I'd like to do, I know that the questions you might have go from G and then to F and then back to G, I believe, so I'll just go ahead in order of the agenda items, if that's okay. So we'll start with F, which is Consent Business Services Approval Amendment for the CARES Act year Summer Recovery Program. Ms. Malley is going to come up and provide us with some responses. The question was, please provide an update on all CARES Act fund. Does this have to do with the Summer School Program Grant? And does it have to do with PPE, fountains, maintenance, et cetera? That was originally going to be submitted to FEMA until FEMA informed they would not be paying. So Ms. Malley and Teri Kennedy?
Actually, we're tagging on this one. The F1, the CARES Act grant that's there, that's an amendment, and that is specifically for the summer program. And what we have there is one of, we were anticipating a charter school to participate. They did not, so we're taking the remaining funds and using them for PPE supplies that we used during the summer. As far as an update on CARES Act, we're in the process of rewriting the CARES Act for ESER and looking for, to change about $5 million to account for PPE supplies. Susan was saying that we have spent in excess of $11 million on PPE, so there's plenty there to recoup from the ESER. And then the PPE that is specifically, or the grant that is specifically for PPE, we're still in the process of rewriting that one because, as you know, the equitable services where we gave funds to private schools or were going to give funds to private schools, that has changed and we're still reworking those numbers. Because we went from 19 schools that were going to participate that were private to less than 10. So that does recoup almost a million for PPE supplies. So that's kind of a summary. Did I answer everything?
That was my question, Karen.
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, so my question was, is my understanding that the grant in the summer that created the summer school for those small group of elementary schools, was the one that was, was that 2 million? How much was that one?
That's correct. It was a little over 2 million.
Okay. And was the specific purpose to help the students that, like, let's just say, the bottom 25 percent and those that were economically challenged as well? Is that correct?
That's correct. It was very specific as to number of hours and face-to-face component and all of those things.
Okay. And now, what, after that summer program was over, what is the rest of that going towards?
So that summer program, that, the remainder of it was for tutoring, and we were also able to cover some PPE supplies that were used during the summer. So that was, this amendment is to expend the rest of the funds that hadn't been spent for that particular grant.
So this 73 is a part of that 2 million? Is that what you?
Yeah, that 73,000, that is the amount that was set aside for charter school that did not use it. So therefore, we said, okay, here's some expenses that we had during the summer that are allowable, let's go ahead and cover that now.
So it's the same grant, though, that $2 million one, that we are asking, can we use this part of it? And what, is there a remainder of that 2 million as well? And you said it's going for tutoring, and is there, you know, specific schools or programs or whatever that that's going for?
Hello. So a couple of the things that the grant is funding are elementary and secondary student relief, so for example-
You said reading?
Pardon?
I couldn't understand that last time.
So we, for the example, the additional 30 minutes in high schools is partially funded by ESER. Okay, so you want to-
That's a different one.
Okay.
So we're down to the, as far as the $2 million for the summer recovery, that was our first CARES Act grant, and we're pretty much done with that. It was, we're at the end of, let's see, what have we not, have we not spent that we could account for? So that's why we looked at and saw, okay, here's 73,000 for charter school that wasn't used, let's expend that on things that were already used this summer, which were specifically some tutoring, and I believe some of the tutoring is listed in the grant, as there were a couple of schools that were targeted, and I can't, I think East might have been one of them, but I'm not sure offhand.
So, yeah, I did see something where East and I think Dunbar, one of the others, was targeted for that. Is there, for sake of time, somewhere that we can see, you know, there was, because I get, truly, I get confused with the-
There's a lot of them.
CSR and the CPR and the EEC and all of them are together, as to just basically what they were for and basically how we have spent them and which ones are about to be done. Because I think December, the end of December is when most of them expire, is that, no?
No, the ESER goes through 2022.
Okay.
And that's the grant that we are, so the one that is going to be done is Gears. So Gears, we're finishing up on that one, which, it's this summer recovery one. So we're finishing up on that one. ESER is the one we're rewriting, that's the one that's 20, about 21 million. And then the newest, the PPE, we haven't even submitted that one to you because we're rewriting. From the time that we submitted initially to the time that, to this time, we've had to rewrite it two or three times, so.
And when you talk about funding for PPE, first thing I think about is masks, but I know there's plenty of other things with PPE. So can you give a little bit more of a definition of when we say PPE? Because I also know, besides the mask fund that we had, that I spoke to Mr. Dejolay, and he said they had given like 300,000 for masks from the county. And so how does that fit into this and how are we on?
So the plan is to use on expenses that we have related, that are PPE supplies, such as masks, cleaning supplies, student shields, anything related to protecting. And it's, the PPE grant is pretty specific. ESER is a little bit more flexible, but we have, what Susan was sharing is that we have spent $10 million or over $10 million on PPE supplies. So if they don't allow it, then we are looking for, such as in, in one of them, they didn't allow the student shields, but in ESER, they're going to allow it. So we're just working between the two to make sure that we can get money back.
And with the students coming back, I think the last number was like 9,000 or whatever, how are we set for funding all the rest of the PPE we might need?
That's not, that's not a question I can answer.
Don't look so happy.
So the 10 to 11 million dollar number that we're talking about is for the school year. It's not what we've spent so far. So at the, over the summer, we came up with the estimated cost for the PPE through the year. So we'll be monitoring that, we'll be monitoring the situation and how things change. We did receive about 156,000 masks from the state. They were distributed to the county, and then we picked them up, and those are the white masks that all, there are five per employee that the state allocated. So in addition to the masks, of course, we have the hand sanitizer, the hand sanitizer stations, the plastic shield divider, student shields, and the gowns and face shields as well.
Okay, and we are, since you did budget it over a year, we're fine with the PPE we need for the kids coming back in November as well?
Yes, for the students we have coming back. We planned for all of our student base, and, you know, we're monitoring and we'll see.
Whether they were there or not, then it's, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments, board members?
I'm sorry, I have one quick more on the fountains. The waterless fountains, are they all in or are they still? Superintendent, I don't know if you can answer that?
Yeah, I know they're still working on them. They're doing a pretty large figure, I can't remember what it was exactly per week, but they're still working on installing them.
And the payment for that comes out of one of these grants as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Okay, Dr. Atkins.
All right, then that takes us to item F3, Business Services Approval Expenditure for the bid, or the request or quote, continuing contract with the General Contractor Services. This is 200,000 to 2 million. So again, Ms. Malley will provide a response. The first question, is this the process that includes points for various things, previous projects? Are these same companies eligible to apply for larger amount projects? And is this, is that a different list?
So yes, this is the solicitation that includes past performance evaluation and project experience. On the same agenda, there are two items, F2 and F3. So the difference between F2 and F3 is that F2 is for projects valued under 200,000, and F3 is for projects 200,000 to 2 million. And vendors are allowed to participate in the solicitation for both of those, and there's a bonding requirement for the higher amount. So some firms who are startups or aren't able to bond for a $2 million project would apply for the lower value of the two contracts.
So is the list the same? In other words?
No, there are 15 vendors awarded for one of the categories and 10 vendors awarded for another, but you will see a lot of duplication of vendors between the two.
So it's 15 for F2 and 10 for F3?
I think it's the other way around. I don't have the numbers in front of me. Whichever one is the larger, I think there are more awardees for the larger, the 200 to 2 million.
Really? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malley.
Okay, the next item that had questions, Approval of Personnel Recommendations. This has, the first question is related to the teacher recruitment list from the board update. So please explain the teacher recruitment list from the board update, and we needed more information for that one. Please explain when the board approves a job description, what happens to the position to fund it and hiring, where is the funding for the chief line item in the budget? And I know Dr. Pruitt will answer a part of it, and then I think we've got also some additional information from Business Services relative to the budget process itself.
Yeah, I was just looking first for clarification on the first question.
The teacher recruitment list from the board update.
I think that was, that was something from Lauren that was sent to us, and I was confused. It had FY '20 and FY '21.
Are you talking about the instruction? The only thing that was in this week's or last week's update was the instructional vacancies, which we try to do every week. And we're just showing you a comparison from last year to this year, if that's what you're talking about.
Okay, so, so the numbers then on the side are for '21?
The numbers at the top in the chart are the current open, you know, where, by zone and by level, and then at the bottom, it shows at this same time last year, how many openings did we have, just so you can kind of see a comparison. Because as I've been saying, it's a concern, and if you look at the comparison, we had less openings this time last year than we do right now.
Right. Okay.
And then in terms of the job, the job description process and bringing them forward for approval to all of you is separate and outside of the budget and hiring process. Job descriptions are created so that they are available when and if a position is brought forward, either through the budget cycle or through other means due to a need that the district has. So is there something more specific that you wanted to ask me about the job description approval?
Well, now, that was the question I had, that I know we had approved the job description. And then is the only other time we see that, when you're actually funding it, is when it goes on the, on the budget?
So, yes. In other words, the, you approve job descriptions and then become part of an active bank of job descriptions?
Right.
And so that's, but in terms of you viewing that, yeah, you wouldn't see that, I mean, like, we don't put them with when we're bringing something forward for hire. Through the budget process each year, you may see some job descriptions due to the cycle of how we're doing the budget, but otherwise, like, we're going to be, you know, bringing another group forward sometime in the future because we've aligned everything and now everything, knowledge, skills, and abilities, it's all cohesive, and so that work is ongoing relative to job descriptions.
So the question that I have is that when we, as a board, approve a position, then the next time we may see that is approving the person for that position. And there, and I'm wondering, is there, so there's nothing in between? And I know the superintendent will say, well, the board already approved that, so us-
Oh, okay, I know, I know. Let me, let me say this, because maybe that'll help. So approving a job description does not mean you've approved the hiring of that position.
Exactly.
The budget process is the primary way that you approve that a position exists within the budget. So when you approve the budget, any of those jobs that are in that budget, you're approving that? So does that, does that help?
No, it does.
Okay.
I guess, that was the thing, the process of approving the job description and approving the hire, and is there something in between? Because if we approve a job description to go in the books, then at what point do we not see it or touch it or anything else until someone has been hired and it's put before us? And specifically, I'm asking for, if it's in the budget process, then where's the line item for some, for the hire?
Oh, okay. Yeah, and I can't answer that. I don't know how they, I don't know how they have that set up in Business Services.
But if you look, like, if you look in the budget, if it's Business Services, if it's Operations, it's Human Resources, they have dollars that are allocated as part of the budget that are specific to the personnel that, or the positions that are actually within that division. So if you get, if you pull up your budget book, and you can look in the different divisions, and it has, you know, how much is allocated for personnel and how much is allocated for supplies and so forth. So within that, those are, there are, there are positions that have been approved. And with every position, you also have to have a job description. So in order for, if we're going to hire somebody, and this is something where Human Resources and Budget Services work very closely together, if Dr. Spiro wants to hire a position, the first thing that has to happen is, well, do we have that position? Has it been approved by the board and is it, as a part of the approved budget? Before he can do that, do we have a job description that goes with that? And all of those things have to come together. Then he gets the authority to, to actually advertise the position and make the hire. Then we hire the person, or, you know, we recommend the hiring of the person, that gets brought to the board, and then that person's appointment to that position is what gets approved. So the dollars get, all that gets approved typically prior to a person being approved for a specific position. Now, if it's something that's just absolutely brand new, we get a grant in the middle of the year, and we're going to, we're going to develop a new position, and we're going to advertise and hire, the first thing we have to do is we have to make sure that we have approval of the dollars in the position before we can go advertise and fill a position.
So basically, and tell me if I'm wrong, we approved, and I'll just use that position, we approved the position, the job description, and in the budget that we approved under operations, under personnel, there was money to fund the position. But there is no line item that says this is funding this position.
You had already approved as a part of the structure for operations, and there was an executive director position that was in that structure that was previously approved, and, and the funding for that was allocated as a part of the FY '20 budget.
Okay. I just, and there's no line item or anything that shows the funding for this position. It's just going, it's only going to be under the personnel section of that particular division. So there's nothing that says a specific position.
There would be an executive director position that was, it was a line item in the FY '20 budget. What you're seeing, though, is that it is an executive director, and we changed the job description for, so the position was funded, but the reason you have a new job description that you approved is because they've restructured the work. And so the money's there for that position, actually more than that, because there's the lapse time. We literally have, have not been paying for that position for quite some time. So there's all that lapse. But it's budgeted for this year, an executive director position. But because actor, Dr. Savage, and he figured, you know, figured it all out and how he wanted to structure his division, he said, I have this executive director unit, but I'm going to reconfigure it and use it in a different way. So the money part of the budget isn't affected, but the HR part of, okay, we need a new job description because he has a different needs in his division, and we need to meet those needs.
Okay. I'll let it mire, Nate. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, because I had a lot of questions surrounding that, and everybody got, Lauren sent answers and then the resume, which we lacked. All right, so one of my questions was the overall cost of adding the position, okay, including secretarial plus other possible employees to assist with emergency prepared dysfunction. And part of the answer said- And part of the answer said that this was a repurposed executive position.
Correct.
So what you're saying is that originally, when executive director, safety, security, and emergency management, when that was put on the organizational chart, originally it was a.
It was on as executive director of operations, like, it was a general, executive director of operations.
Okay, so here's my thing, because I'm looking forward to, as we do our negotiations for teacher salaries, and the belt tightening that is going to come with that. And I'm just right now getting the feeling that, okay, here's a department, and, oh, I have a slot here for this, so I'm just going to use it. I'm going to spend the money for this, and it says, it was already within the organization, so it's a cost-neutral change. Well, okay, I can understand what that says, cost-neutral, because it was already budgeted, but on the other hand, it's a cost that we haven't been incurring. I mean, this has been a vacant slot for a long time, correct?
Correct, but here's what I'm going to say to you, is that having been part of the conversations at the chief and cabinet level, it's not as if Dr. Savage just woke up and said, you know what, I got to fill this. It literally has been, and if you've heard him speak, you know he's very thoughtful, he's very analytical, and he has really been observing and watching and figuring out the strengths of the team that he did have, and, you know, where they want to do the work. And so it's, okay, now we know what our gaps are, and so here's, here is the position and the skill, knowledge, skills, and abilities that we need to address that gap. I'm just going to tell you, that's from my perception of sitting in those meetings.
And I, just to give you my perception, you know, I think that what we've had to do as a result of this pandemic is actually reshuffle, you know, normal responsibilities. So the chief of staff in the school district really cannot operate as a full chief of staff, but ends up, has ended up spending the majority of her time really responding to the pandemic and doing all the coordination of that. Thank goodness, we did not have, you know, a major hurricane in the midst of all of this, because that would have added another layer, and I understand, you know, what Mr. Parfitt's role is, and I think he definitely plays a very important role in this organization. But in terms of the need for an executive-level position to handle situations of this magnitude with a district this size, I think is something that is important for us. And then, again, would allow some of the staff that have had to take on those additional responsibilities, go back to the responsibilities that they're, they were really intended to, you know, to conduct, or the role that they were intended to have.
Okay, well, I'm seeing, as I read through the essential job functions of the executive director, there seemed to be a lot of PR work involved with this, with community meetings, let's see, representing, what was that, representing the district in various meetings and so on and so forth, the 10 local, regional, and state meetings as representative of the superintendent's cabinet. I don't know, my problem with this is just looking at our overall budget, and to me, whether it was budgeted or not, I would prefer to see this, if it is going to occur, happen after we have finished negotiations with our, with TAOE and SPAC. Because I remember, I guess it was a couple years ago, when every single department had to tighten the belt, and if every penny is spent, what is left to tighten? Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying. My response is, yeah, my response is going to be that, you know, you've already provided us the negotiating authority, and that amount was based on the current budget and after everybody tightening their belts and going through their budgets and all of that. So I'm just going to say to you that, you know, having, going through what we've experienced the last, you know, six months, we have to have somebody in that position. I'm just going to say, I mean, that's just my own personal belief. It's necessary, and so, my opinion.
Yeah, I think she said it better than I could articulate, you know, just living through it, really, to me, demonstrated to me as a superintendent, this is a position that this district really needs to have in place at this size of district, not to have a person to manage this, I think, would be a mistake, in my opinion.
Okay, so one more thing then, since this position has the same job title plus emergency management, I'm wondering on the organizational chart, why there wasn't a split right there? And who would be the people? When I asked the question about other people, like secretarial, but plus other people, would there be other, because it sounds like the people that we have right now under director of safety and security are more concerned with the physical school plants and all the things that we've talked about for the past several years, about the schools and locks and.
Well, remember, you know, because this position did exist in the past, the support structure is there, and the people are there. There is no, there is no plan to, to need additional support structure for that position.
So there would be people under this candidate that would be emergency management? That's what.
Well, the, I think what Dr. Pruitt's referring to is that all the positions that are already there already exist. One of the most important aspects of this new position, I don't want to belabor what's already been said, is the composite nature of our organization. One of the greatest challenges is that so much of our work is funneled to various multitude of departments. And so being able to work across that many departments with seamless coordination to respond to issues is something that we've seen evidenced in many of the incidents that we've been through, most notably the pandemic. And just to take Ms. Gittens' question and connect it to Ms. Vaughn's question here, this all was precipitated at the time of the beginning of the pandemic, and a clear awareness that a crisis of this scale is a dramatic challenge for our organization. And as Dr. Atkins said, the work has to get done, but unfortunately, the work is far less efficiently done when it is being done across many people who are not framed for that type of work, asking a lot of questions that a person who has expertise in this particular area can hit the ground running. So instead of it having to be handled, you know, in spite of the fact that all of us are working very, very hard, when you have people with the documented skill set and tremendous experience in this area, that allows them to work even more efficiently and effectively from day one. And that's not to discredit that all of us as chiefs and everyone sitting together, but we had to meet every single day for most of our day to work through all these issues month by month, as I'm sure many others did. And other districts of a large size tended to add as well. Miami Dade, some of these others made programs at a high level to ensure that they would include that, especially the emergency medical side, which was, you know, we had, fortunately, Ms. Whiff, who did an excellent contribution, but again, just strengthening and buttressing that level of work and coordination across all divisions as well. So this executive role allows that person to be a part of our team, really lead that effort, bring that expertise to our team so that it can allow us to be more effective and efficient.
Okay.
You know, one of the things, you know, he mentioned composite organization, just to kind of, you know, provide a little bit of explanation there. You know, you hear Mr. Davis talk about it quite frequently, and I remember, you know, working on the ERP, learning that concept as well. You know, you're really, yeah, you're looking at horizontal as well as vertical management, and that's critically important in this day where we're really trying to reduce the silos within divisions. So if you have an executive-level position, it's one of the charges that they have to do is to be able to work cross-divisionally to make sure that the work gets done.
Okay, well, I asked for rationale, I got a rationale, thank you.
Thank you, board members, any other comments or questions? Ms. Giovinelli?
I just have a couple. When was this advertised?
I don't remember.
Giovinelli, can you, I can't.
I'd have to get you the exact dates. I didn't, that wasn't asked ahead of time, so I don't have that with me.
Okay, and how many, then how many applicants?
I'd have to look that up, I don't have that memorized.
And then, well, then how many employees will be underneath this executive director?
We can get that number to you.
Oh, you don't know that?
No, I don't, sorry, we have 12,000 employees, I can't keep it all memorized, how many people in departments and everything else, but we can certainly get that for you.
It looks like seven by what they sent us.
Pardon me?
It looks like seven by what, the, no.
More than that.
Seven employees?
No, there's zone managers and there's security specialists.
We can get you that number, we just didn't anticipate bringing that information this afternoon.
And I know Dr. Savage, I'm looking for it here, I'm sorry, I wasn't ready for it either, but, oh, yes, I was ready for it, sorry. Eighty-nine candidates were vetted, 42 met the desired qualifications for final consideration, and of the 42, three final candidates emerged with the highest scores across the 12-scored criteria. And so that was, that answers some of the questions, I think, that you had asked Ms. Giovinelli, and then Dr. Savage had indicated the month of September is when this was advertised, but we can get you the exact dates.
Okay, yeah, my only, actually, I'm excited about the position because I think safety and security emergency is very important. My only concern was that, I just, as it was unaware that this was happening. I think that's, I don't recall that this came up in a conversation, so that's my only concern, is that understanding. One of the things that I would be interested to know is if the new executive director would be, is, you know, interested in assisting in getting that guardian program started. That would be important for me. And then I know it came up in conversation, and it's come up at the table a couple times regarding the possibility of our own police department, and I don't know that I would be really supportive of that, but I would be curious as his opinion, because I would respect that, I think he's very qualified, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Board members, any other comments? Ms. Gittens?
Is, I don't know what Ms. Giovinelli just said, is that a consideration that was on the table of us having our own police department for the district as they have in other districts?
Well, it is something that we have, we have looked, looked at doing, you know, because we've had it come up on occasion previously. At this time, that wouldn't be our recommendation to you, doesn't mean we won't re, you know, look at that again. The reason for our rationale is that we have a really good, we feel we have really great relationships with our partners, you know, the city of Cape Coral with, you know, Sanibel, Fort Myers, and the county. And the thing that, I think this is kind of a win-win for all municipalities, because it gives them an opportunity to get to know students and also do some community policing. It gives us an opportunity to have, you know, law enforcement in our buildings with all the things that SROs have. So I think, you know, when you have a situation like we're in, where we have these really good working relationships, and we're very satisfied and happy with the way our SROs are performing, that I wouldn't be recommending something like that at this time. They provide the training, you know, they provide the equipment. There's also, you know, concerns with, you know, liability, obviously, that always comes up, you know, where, if you think about where are we going to store weapons and all that kind of stuff, if we were to have.
Insurance costs alone, I remember when we looked at it, I think my first year in this position was just astronomical because of that, because of the liability and everything associated with it.
But there are districts that do decide to go down that avenue, particularly larger districts, although there's some smaller ones as well, but most of the districts are kind of following, are really are following the model that we have in place in our district.
And also because we cost-share with our partners, so that makes it very cost-effective.
The only last question I have, and I was a little confused, repurposing the executive director and creating another chief? Now, so how does that?
Executive director to executive director, not a new chief.
Okay, so where is your position, Dr. Savage, in all of this?
He would be the supervisor of that executive director position, it will be in his division, and he will supervise that position.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Gittens, and Ms. Jordan?
I just have one quick question, only because Dr. Atkins just said this about relationships, that we have a great relationships with the different police departments. Would we maintain that relationship if this person comes over?
Yes.
With us?
Yes.
Okay, that, thank you.
All right, so I'll just ask, at this time, well, I know I have one other one, is there anything else with that specific position or the executive director? And I'll move on to the next HR item.
Okay, move on, please.
All right, approval of Florida Gulf Coast University STAR intern addendum. When was the board briefed on this? When will it start? And will you put East Zone Schools with the Highest Need first on the list?
So it's an ongoing program, and so the board was briefed when it first started. So this is just a continuation of our current practice, and yes, East Zone Schools is where we place them.
Thank you.
So I just.
It's a great program.
Toot her horn a little bit, or HR's, I mean, it really is a great way for us to recruit some of their best teachers into our school district, so I think it's a real win.
We do the same thing with FSW, and actually, we've got, I think, anywhere from five to nine from FSW that are also, I mean, and when I keep sharing with you my concern about our vacancies, we literally had one principal, you know, in tears of joy because we called and told her that we had a couple of these interns to fill their vacancies, and they were just so relieved. So it's a good thing, it's a really good thing. It's been very, very successful.
Yep, Ms. Gittens?
Just one more thing on that, and it is an excellent program, and anything that we can do inside or outside the bus of the box or whatever to get instructors is good. The only concern is, I know I was involved in a situation where the intern was not able to pass their certifications at a certain point, and so there was a window of time to do that, and that's how I ended up teaching fourth grade one year.
Yeah, and fortunately, they have to have passed at least the general knowledge in those exams, and they have to be on track to be graduating with their degree in education. And I don't know what year that was, but what the universities have done in the last, I know for sure two, it might be three, those students that get to their senior year and are not able to pass the test, like you're talking about, they put them in a different degree program.
Right.
And so, and then, you know, we work to hire some of those teachers and put them through our boot camps and all of that to help them to get what they need to be able to pass those tests.
Right, and that's what I wanted to emphasize, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I think, I believe that that got to all the questions that we received. I think, I believe that that got to all the questions that we received.
Okay.
That we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have the attorney's recommendation relative to the collegiate academy, but.
Right.
I think that's it.
So with regards to the total expenses that was not refunded, I do not have the number for that. I know that right now we've received, I believe it was $87. However, the statute does have a process for the refunding of the amounts expended, and that process is encompassed in the agreement to ensure that it is followed. Some of those funds will go back directly to the DOE, some of it will come back to us. We are still waiting for the ledger from the collegiate to forward to us. It's my understanding that they've sent it, but I don't believe we've received it yet. We have not received it yet, so we'll be following up with that. As this was pending before the ALJ, so certain discovery requests were sent, which are a list of questions and documents that we requested, so we're still anticipating that we will be receiving that information as well. So at this point, we're going to be monitoring the process pursuant to the statute, and then we'll have some more additional information as we receive funds and we can update the board.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Dr. Atkins, do you have anything else?
Uh, don't, well, let me, just a couple, couple of quick things. I think Ms. Vaughn had a question regarding the Lee Virtual School, and I wanted to say that's, the movement of Lee Virtual School, we did make a change that was pretty quick to move, to give those parents the option to, to move them back to, to a face-to-face model. That is something, if you, if you look at our innovative reopening plan, or innovative reopening plan, that is something that we said that we would do. It was one of the assurances that we had to give the state, that we will, if we do progress monitor, that if a student, if a student is receiving instruction through an innovative teaching method, fails to make adequate progress, the student must be provided additional support and the opportunity to transition to another teaching method. So that's, that's what we felt we needed to do, is because of the data that, that was provided. And I think, and Dr. Spiro, at this point, I think we have something like 10,000, 535 that are, I think, are face-to-face, and something like 420, I think, that have moved from face-to-face to the Lee Home Connect model. So now that number, like I said, the face-to-face that will be coming back second quarter is a little bit over 10,000, so. So that, I mean, I think, I think it's a positive thing. I think, you know, the face-to-face model, a lot of, a lot of parents are feeling pretty good about what's been going on in our schools and feel a little bit more comfortable coming back, so.
Okay. Thank you. And Mrs. Gittens?
The question I have is, do we have numbers as to how many are coming back to face-to-face from LVS? And also, is that process going to help us free up any teachers that can return to their home school for face-to-face?
Okay. And Dr. Spiro has that information. Hopefully, I'll read, or you have it?
I have it right here for you.
All right. I'm looking at your chart. I want to make sure I'm reading.
That's fine. Good afternoon, everybody. The number of students that are returning from Lee Virtual School back to face-to-face is 1,187.
I was looking at it right. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. And in regard to, in regard to the teachers, certainly, you know, Dr. Pruitt and the budget department and myself, we're going to be huddling up this week and seeing what those changes, what the impact of those changes are as regard to teaching staff.
And maybe kind of reorging that in order to free up some teachers to come back?
I'd want to speak to Dr. Pruitt, so, but we are going to be looking at all of those, yes.
You can get the answer to me later, but I just was thinking that might be an option to help us get some more bodies back in the schools.
We will put, we'll put the bodies where the kids are.
Thank you. Mrs. Vaughn?
Yeah. Dr. Atkins touched on the list of questions that I sent in. Do you want me to ask those now or wait for good of the order?
Okay.
There were quite a few questions that I had, and we have not answered those questions yet.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Vaughn.
Dr. Spiro?
Okay. The first, the first thing is, I consider this, this is, this was a major change in
our policy to what we had announced to parents. And I'm not saying that I disagree with, I wasn't aware that that was part of the agreement with the, with the state, that verbiage, but why wasn't the board consulted ahead of time of this major change? Because I know I had at least a few people writing, and, you know, I sent, I sent it on, but there were a couple parents that I responded, and I explained the whole thing about the different curriculum and why we had decided to do it this way. And lo and behold, all of the information that we gave to the parents when we were informing them and the differences, this, this was something major when we said, this locks you in for a semester. And certainly, I hope we don't have 11, over almost 1,200 students that are doing that poorly, but I'm looking at the fact that almost a third, almost two-thirds of our middle school kids and over half of our high school kids are receiving Ds, Fs, or have never logged in at all. And that's a bit of a crisis. So first of all, why weren't we notified in a timely manner that this was a big change that was going to have to happen so that as we respond to constituents, why did you do it that way? And you explain it, and then lo and behold, no, that's the wrong explanation, Ms. Vaughn.
I can give you, let me give you, I can give you up to the point, I spoke with Dr. Atkins. So part of our team's work, and I have Student Services and Curriculum Instruction here, part of our work was analyzing the percent of students that were Ds or Fs or haven't logged in. We were gathering that data, and when we got that data specifically from Lee Virtual School, it was alarming to us because there was a large number of students that were not being successful in that model. And we really felt like, based around what we told the state, that we were going to be providing that another instructional model opportunity for those students, we would do that sooner rather than later. You know, as educators, when we see that, oh, we have a large number of students that aren't being successful, and it's really felt like a systemic issue that we needed to address it very quickly, which is then when we had that conversation.
Okay. And I get that part. This first question just has to do with, it would have been nice for the board to have been informed on what was going on in a timely manner instead of, this is what we have done.
All right. Well, my response to that would be that we literally, this was something we made a decision on quickly, notified the board, and did it. I mean, it, we did, we, there wasn't a period of time that I, that we were holding this information. It was literally, we made the decision based on data we had in front of us, and we notified the board and moved forward.
Okay. And that's what I'm asking. All right. All right. So in the explanations that we got back in the board updates, I had asked, what is the plan for students with zero logins? Okay? And the options are, the school may administer a quarter-one mastery test, and of course, those mastery tests exist only for certain courses, I'm assuming. The school may use, and this is the one that really bothers me, the school may use quarter-two final grade to retroactively assign same grade as quarter-one. I have a huge problem with that because, in effect, a child who has not logged in at all can log in for half of the first semester and get a retroactive grade, you just doubled the second. I can see where that might work for some courses. For instance, you could make an argument for foreign language where you learn in steps, or maybe some math classes. But there are classes like US history. I'm sorry, you don't have to know the Revolutionary War. We're almost up to the Civil War right now, just don't worry about that half. And the spiraling concept courses, I don't see a good argument that can be made at all for those. The school may use a grade from a midterm exam. I have questions on, are those exams in existence at all schools? Are this going to put more work on the teacher receiving those new children? Is it going to, I mean, the teacher is going to have kids that, because of the difference in the curriculum, you know, may be good students, but they just plain haven't had a particular concept the teacher has already taught. I see this putting a lot of weight on the teacher. And who's going to make that decision? Is it up to the teacher receiving those kids? Well, and it, there's language here that says what works best. So you mean a teacher has to look, let me give this kid an exam, oh, wait, he didn't do so well, I'll just double whatever. I mean, there's a lot of fluidity in this plan, and that's one problem I have. And then the weight on the teachers. And finally, and you know how I feel about this, it doesn't seem like there's going to be a consistency among the schools, and that's not right either. So if you can address those.
Great. And thank you. And I knew when we were working this plan with our principals, I knew, I had you in my mind as we were, as we were working through this, because I knew there'd be some questions, rightfully so. So the systemic plan is what you've laid out. Those are what we're going to be doing across the district, but we're going to be looking at each individual student to see where he or him or her are in relation to their academics.
I'm sorry. Who's "we"?
It'll be the administrator in the school, so, and the assistant principals for curriculum as they're analyzing those students as well. I'm going to let Candace talk a little bit about the midterms so you can see how those work as well.
If I only had a few more of those inches, right? So we've been working cross-department because this really does have a large impact. We thought those same exact things of how, and how do we do it consistently? So while we'll be working closely with the school-based administrators and the APCs, also with the counselors, and we've looked at what's within our purview and how we can do this, and tried to lay it out in the manner of hierarchy of what needs to be done. So those mastery tests, those are for our state-assessed courses. So those state-assessed courses were those first courses that popped into our heads of, we really need to find out those gaps in instruction, especially since our students coming back from LVS, those standards may not have been instructed in the same exact manner. So those students will get a mastery assessment at both middle and high for state-assessed courses. So right there, that's going to be the first stop for the student, and hopefully, we'll be able to glean some really good data on the holes that they have so teachers are able to differentiate moving forward. But that score could also be used to replace their quarter-one grade, because that should have been their quarter-one standards that they had learned. We also know for some of the students that have not logged in, some of it is a compliance piece. That's a conversation we often have about grades and what are grades measuring. So if they're able to show standards-based mastery and pass that quarter-one mastery assessment, and in virtual school statute is based upon mastery and not seat time, we're going to award that quarter-one grade. And we can do that for our courses in which we have those mastery tests. Now, to your point, though, we don't have those in every course. So therefore, we needed to go to that next step of what can we do across the district? Well, we know it's not possible to ask our teachers to go back and reteach all of the quarter-one content. But again, we don't know each one of these students' scenarios, so what we can do is ask our teachers to continue to move forward in their content the way they would and fill those holes from differentiation. If the student's able to show quarter-two mastery, we can use that grade in quarter-one and have that there, because a lot of the courses, it will build. You are absolutely correct. In some courses, we are going to have to go back and figure out how do we fill the gaps in their education. Then moving forward on that, though, if I'm one of those students that I'm still missing so many holes, but through my tutoring, my after-school, my interventions, I get to midterm, and hopefully, my teacher's been able to fill those, those midterms, they're required to have a midterm grade already per our progression plan, so it's not something new we're asking teachers to do. It's already in there. When they give that, if the student is successful, then that will be their quarter-one grade. And the very last piece, as we're looking at these and trying to think about our teachers and what is manageable, but also our students and how to provide what's best for them, then we say, okay, what were the pertinent things I taught and assigned in quarter-one that I really need to know the students have? And I assign that work to them, and that is their quarter-one grade, because those are the same assignments that my students had to do. With that one, though, we put that last, because as we're thinking about students who are coming back and not knowing what their scenarios were and why they hadn't logged in, we don't want to double up extra makeup work on top of them because we know it's just going to cause them to shut down. So it would try to think about it in a progression, but knowing that we are going to work with every APC, because every situation's going to be unique, the same as the counselors. So we know it's got to be in tandem together. Lori, anything else on that one?
I think you covered everything. Thank you.
Okay. But I can still see, especially the last thing you said about, let me assign things I gave my students first quarter, that's a whole lot more grading on, on these teachers. And I'm just going to say, God forbid, that you're putting a bunch of these kids coming from Lee Virtual into those hybrid classes.
Absolutely. Which is why it was our fourth option. And when we work with the APCs on this process, we will be very clear, these are the steps that we would like the order to go in. So that one is that last resort, but we do know we have to have something for a quarter-one grade to see where the students are.
Okay. And I'm not quite sure, you have here, an example here of elective courses, and that they're going to be taking the full semester at once because instead of one period, or a period every other day, they're going to have it every day. And I understand that, but can you explain why, okay, students coming with six courses, and they should have eight?
Correct. So the LVS students were scheduled into six courses. That's their full time. So since our high school scheduled into eight courses, right now, they're coming back short. But because of bona fide seat time, we can't just put them in two electives because you can't award a quarter credit. So we need to be able to give them one consistent daily elective so they can actually earn that half credit. So that example there is just one example. As of today, we've continued to get feedback from administrators because we haven't finalized the process yet, as they say, well, what does this look like? Can I do this with team sports? Can I do this with? And they're given examples of classes. So the example that we provided there is just one. We had pulled two courses we know we talk about often with teachers and being a benefit to our students, but the only way to be able to award an actual half credit is they're going to need a daily elective.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't thinking about LVS only having six instead of eight, but that makes, that makes sense, and that explains what you just said. Finally, I know that a term that was used quite a bit during the fourth quarter last year was grading with grace. And, you know, I looked at the briefing we're going to have tomorrow on InVision 2030, and the fact that we're looking, we're valuing accountability, not just our accountability, but accountability for our students, and we're also valuing high standards, setting high expectations for them. And, you know, I know it's a conundrum. And, you know, I know it's a conundrum that on one hand, well, of course, we don't want to lose the funding either, do we, on these kids? But if I were a child, especially in high school, especially if I was upper level, and somebody came into my class and had sat out for nine weeks, and just kind of came sailing in, I know I, as a student, would have questions about it. So I'm just wondering how you define grace, and is there, I ran this by a couple of my high school teacher friends who teach upper levels, and they believe in the grace, but they also believe there's a limit, there's a red line in the sand. So I just wanted you to.
Yeah, and I do understand that. And so when we were looking at this progression plan, we really had, keeping all kids in mind, we wanted kids to be successful. However, every kid's different walking in that door. So if I'm in a Cambridge class, and a kid was at home doing Lee Home Connect, and now all of a sudden, I'm in this Cambridge class, they don't know my situation, the other students in the class, and they don't know what I've been through, what I've accomplished, what I've not accomplished, for those upper-level courses you're talking about. You know, remember, it's syllabus-driven, they're going to be assessed at the end on these international standards, and so they're going to have to do the makeup of the rigor of what they're going to experience when they have that assessment at the end of the year. So, you know, part of that responsibility to talk about is definitely heavy on the child to make sure that they are moving at a rate and pace that catches them up with their peers, so that they're prepared for that assessment at the end that they're looking for, especially for those upper-level courses. But in terms of grace as a whole, you know, this whole new, this was new for everybody, everybody. And so when we see kids, a large amount of kids aren't being successful, and we know a lot of teachers are struggling in this model as well, that grace goes both ways, where we're trying to find ways to help kids become successful by maybe changing the modality that they're in, and at the same time, we're trying to find ways to help teachers be successful by finding every possible tool that we can provide teachers and give that to them as they're learning this new skill and art of being in virtual education. So I think all of this has been about grace. And I do understand where teachers come from, where there comes a point where you're like, all right, enough's enough, they've had their opportunities, which is why we wanted to do this now as opposed to later, so that, could you imagine that at the semester, what that possibly could have looked like? And so that's when we were analyzing the data on an ongoing basis. The purpose of that was to really see what is the progress of our children. But I hear, I hear what you're saying, but that's, that's what I consider grace to be.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, I know that was a lot of questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fawn.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
A couple of questions. How were families made aware of the ability to switch from LVS to face-to-face? That availability to do it, because I don't think it was not marketed as much as, at least my understanding was, that from the fifth to the 16th, the option was to go from either face-to-face.
Those were the Lee Home Connect or face-to-face. For the Lee Virtual School, which happened last week, we were able to work with Trey Davis and his team, and literally pinpointed every child in Lee Virtual School. They're the ones that, this didn't go blanket out across the whole district. It was targeted to just those students with the information and the opportunity to make that switch.
Okay. And if, if they never logged on, it's like they just didn't do any school at all since, you know, since school started.
And that's the scary part, right? So when you looked at the kids that have never logged on, and then you go back, and if you look at each of those kids, I wonder, and for me, you know, this has been what, since April, May, you know, were they, where were they, fourth quarter last year as well?
Nothing.
And that's part of the digging that we're doing.
So some, and we were talking earlier about some of the CARES Act funding that was, you know, specifically for tutoring and this type of thing. Do we have some of that funding left available now that we've unearthed this issue? Because on the back end of it, it was my understanding that the district does not get funding for students if they do not complete the program in LVS and Lee Virtual. So we're saying now that we have over a thousand students that did not, and can we use CARES Act funding to help with the tutoring, et cetera, et cetera, to bring them up to speed? Does that?
And that is a great question, and so might be something this Kennedy and our team talk about, you know, looking forward as now that we're looking, now that we have the data in front of us.
But it is a fact that we don't get, we will not get like FTE funding for those students, because they weren't bottoms in seats on the, the date we took.
Yeah, I can't answer the funding question. I'll have to ask business services to.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens.
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you very much for doing that, because I know I have several grandsons that are on Lee Virtual, and my daughter was ecstatic about being able to switch them over now, and a lot of the people that I have talked to. And they did get like a special invitation to do so multiple ways. So that was really a good thing, that they were made aware of it that way. And then how many, were there over a thousand kids that did not log in? I must have missed that.
I'd have, I didn't bring the data with me, so I really have to pull it up and send that back to you.
Yeah, I would like to know that, how many kids we were not able to.
I'm happy to provide that in the board update.
Thank you.
I think I did last week, but if not, I'll make sure that.
I'll go back and look then.
I'll look.
Thanks.
Lock together on what we got.
I can go ahead and separate that out for you, if that we can see.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gittens?
And on the, you said you worked with technology and Trey Davis to recognize these students, and was there also working with the local schools, because they would pretty much know their students as well? So how was that collaboration?
So our, our last week, last week, our, we, our principals were calling, first off, Lee Home Connect kids, so they had a list of students who were not being successful in Lee Home Connect, and those schools were reaching out to those families at the school level, telling them, hey, the window of time is here now, if you want to come back face-to-face because your child appears to not be, not being successful, or that conversation, that phone could go the other way, what are some, what are some interventions that we could do to help you be successful while you're doing Lee Home Connect? So principals made those phone calls for the Lee Home Connect students specifically. All of our principals were aware of what was happening with Lee Virtual School. We communicated with them as well. We had a principal meeting where we shared the rationale, the why we were making this change, what did the process look like, what did that mean for them as well? So they, they were aware of the process.
So specific schools, were they able to keep up with their students that had gone Lee Virtual?
Do you mean were they able to make connections?
Only through you, right, so.
No, they, schools could still see their students and reach out to them and check in with them if they wanted, if they made that effort to do that.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens.
Thank you. Board members, any other comments or questions? I think that's it, and thank you so much, Dr. Spiro, Candace, and Ms. Brooks. Okay, so at this time, since we're finished with the agenda review and questions are answered, we'll move on to good of the order. So I'll start with Mrs. Giavennelli.
The only thing that I have, I don't have a lot, I just had some, some people reach out to me.
Giavennelli, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I forget. I've had actually teachers reach out to me regarding their concern about going back into the classroom and, and making sure that the social distancing is, is going to be available, or, actually, the fear of being overcrowded. So I think that we, we are, I know we're going to try to keep everybody as safe as, as possible, but I just want some reassurance for them, just to know that they, you know, we are worried, you know, and thinking about the, the teachers and the staff and the students, and are concerned, I shouldn't say worried, concerned, you know, so we just want to make sure if we can send that message out there. That's, that's really all I have, I just, we're aware, and, because we're concerned, everyone's concerned that the numbers are going to increase with the attendance in the classroom. So I think that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jordan?
The only thing I would like to speak on, and I'm not sure if we could possibly have a meeting or how this would work, but just the, the reaction of the last meeting and making sure that everyone, the decorum of the people who come here to the meetings, and that everybody is treated with respect, and when is that cutoff that we're not going to accept what's taking place with our people who are coming here to speak? I just really need to, to know that we're going to make sure we can handle that.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Gittens?
Attorney Dupree Bruno, I believe there was not discussion about the process in our meetings. Can you speak to that at this time?
The only thing I can add to that is that we did have a meeting with, excuse me, with Dr. Atkins and some other members of staff in terms of some things that we can do to ensure that the meetings are controlled a little bit more, in terms of individuals who will be in different rooms for, because they did not want to wear a mask, and how we would handle that. So there is a little bit of a tightening in terms of the process to make sure that we can avoid conflicts and issues that arose at the last meeting.
Okay, and I know, I had mentioned a suggestion, because I'd gotten phone calls and, and texts of people feeling that they were not handled equitably in our choice of who spoke and when. So the suggestion was that we have someone, when they hand out the blue cards out there, that the people also just sign the list next to that number, so they know that we are not in any way manipulating that process. And especially now that we're in the midst of the COVID and not having people walk up and hand their cards in. So I don't know where we are in that process, but I just thought it would help to kind of alleviate some of the question.
We did, we had a couple of board members that did make that suggestion. We feel that, you know, what we want to do is follow our board policy, which actually makes it to where we, we can do something like that. We, you're going to come in and you would, there's only one place that you can get that blue card, and then we take that, the order at which you turn in the card is the order at which you are called to speak. So that's, so the first person coming in, this is the first person, this is the card that Ms. Dupree Bruno is going to call first, and, and everyone after that gets called in the order at which they turn that card in. So what we will be able to do as we coordinate that out there is provide a list for Ms. Dupree Bruno, she'll have the blue cards, we'll also have an order at which the folks are going to speak. We will have that in the back of that room, so that they will have access to that list, so they know, you know, who's going to be next, who's going to be on deck, which would be right there, and then the speaking position will be right there. So you'd have, that way, you can have a free flow of people coming in here, so you don't have, you know, it backing up, you don't have a crowd back there, but you have one person waiting to speak before the microphone. Everyone else has an opportunity to hear everything that's said during public comment. And so I think that, that if we're able to do that, which is exactly what your board policy calls for, you know, so it's just following that board policy, making sure that we have three people really that have that speaking order, including your board attorney, so we can always stay on the same page and make sure that we get a speaker to the microphone timely.
Okay, may I? Ms. Jordan? I just want to make sure that, and that sounds great doing it that way, and I know that that's how they used to do it back when, but I, I just want to make sure that there's a means or a way that if people are cussing or berating other people, that we have the ability to shut them down, because that is so wrong, and we cannot, everybody should be, feel comfortable and feel welcome to walk in here at any time. So we, we have to make sure that we can control that.
Well, two pieces, you know, one, one piece with while the meeting is going on, that's obviously controlled by your, your board chair and your parliamentarian, so we've talked, we've, we've, all of us have been talking about that as well. So that's first, first thing that we, you know, reviewed what we're going to do there. The second thing is you often see disturbances that might happen before a meeting or after a meeting. So we've worked with our, with, you know, Commander Miller and our SROs to make sure, or deputies, I should say, to make sure that, that we know how to handle, staff knows how to handle a disruption if we see it, and that we also, so what we will be doing if we have something like this is taking a deputy with us and providing that warning to that person if, if what they're doing is, is a disruption, and that's before, after the meeting, because we, you know, we kind of, we were handling that part of it, and then while, once the meeting gets started, then that's, that's turned over to the chair and the parliamentarian at that point.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I agree. I think it was just, just very unfortunate, the way, and we have to, for the sake of everyone, tighten up the process. I want to say to everyone that has not, may not have had the opportunity to watch the first part of the EDAC meeting from this week, I think it was on Monday, very, very informative. Kudos, what they basically did was have some teachers, some coaches, some administrators that went before the committee and, and answered the same questions about our models and how the, the challenges, the positive, and all of that, and they all answered the same. And I would suggest that everyone take the time to watch at least the first half of the EDAC meeting and, you know, share it with others, because you've got a real good perspective from all levels, the challenges and the positives and what's working. And we don't often get to hear, everybody doesn't, from all levels, what's going on and what's working well. And thank you to the staff and the individuals that presented at that, and I suggest that everyone watch that first half. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, may I ask you what, what the topic was?
It, it was about the models, and I don't know if you can explain it any better.
Yeah, it was about, you know, obviously, EDAC is, is looking at how some of the minority students fare and just in general. And actually, we did, it was different levels, but it was elementary, but, but there were teachers from kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers and some specials and, and all of that. But what, as Ms. Gittens said, what things were working, and the, the main interest of the committee was, were our minority students, how were they handling it? And, yeah, and I can have, I don't, I don't have my notes with me right, right now, but I, if I've forgotten something, if I have forgotten something from that part, I'll fill you in tomorrow. Thank you very much. Okay, do you have anything else, Ms. Fawn? I've probably asked enough questions. Now, I totally, I don't have any other questions, but I agree with what some of the, my fellow board members have said, we just cannot have people coming in here and feeling insulted or intimidated or just uncomfortable coming in here. And, you know, those of us sitting up here, we've, especially for where we're teachers, we, we've developed some pretty thick skin, but, and I was not feeling well last week, so I was just listening, and I was just appalled with what was, what was happening. So I'm really glad that staff and, and everybody's met together and have a better plan to keep the little, I guess it was more like people congregating, there were, and, and it's, it's like with students or any, any, any human nature, if you're with like-minded people, you're going to kind of rally. So for all of you out there watching us, please come in. We have a definite handle on all of this, and I would hate people to feel shy about coming in because they're. coming in because they're nervous, not only nervous about speaking, but then nervous about getting heckled or, and I dare say there were probably some comments that were made, because I've heard it from some people that have corresponded with me, that we wouldn't have heard up here, but a few nasty things that were said. So just wanted to reinforce what has already been said, and that's it. Absolutely. Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have nothing to add to that. And so tomorrow, we will have our briefing at 2:00 PM.
Ms. Fisher, I have a...
Sorry.
That's okay. I have a couple of, I have a couple of quick comments. I just wanted to bring the board up to speed with regards to the contract process. We had talked about that a little while back. At this time since mid-June, we have not had to use outside counsel to review any of the contracts. They've been reviewed primarily, obviously, by myself. My office has created a process for us to streamline the contract review. I have been able to create a document to assist with that, to make sure that all of the contracts meet the legal form. There are certain contracts that I have requested that staff attorney review before they do come to me, which are real estate contracts, since they have a little bit more experience in that area. So prior to it coming to me, it is vetted by staff attorney. In addition to that, we, there's a couple of times where contracts have been requested to be drafted by an expert in real estate, but otherwise, we have not had to utilize any attorneys for contract review or contract drafting. Once the contracts come in, my assistant, Johanna, pretty much processes all of those contracts and monitors them so that they can be timely returned to the department. And revisions, if necessary, are also given back to the department, and they try to work those out with the other side. If for some reason that does not happen, then it comes back to me. I have had to negotiate with, for example, the Fort Myers Beach. I talked to their attorney. I've had to negotiate with the university. I've negotiated with county attorneys, et cetera, to make sure that all of the terms are appropriate. And then once that is done, it's approved, and it is processed to go on to the agenda. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed on the contract process. The only other thing that we would like to do is to get it into board docs so that we can check off, but that is a process that's a little bit time-consuming. I know that staff is going to be working on that, but there's really no urgency at this point to do that, since basically I do have a process in place to handle the contracts.
Thank you, Attorney Bruno. Dr. Atkins?
Just a couple of quick things. One is, you know, regarding the invocation, again, somebody that's been a member of this district for a long, long time, seeing the invocation of board meetings, I'm a little saddened with that, but I understand, based on Ms. DePree Bruno's document or memo, the direction of the board. However, I will say that if we're able to, we will do some research on process, so you can look at what other municipalities do in terms of a selection of somebody, should you choose in your reorganization to go that route again. And so at least you'll have that information in advance of that meeting. That's just sharing personal opinion, but also just my commitment to make sure that at least you have that for the reorganization. Last thing, and Ms. Giavennelli had asked for some reassurances, understandably so, since you have, you know, like 10,000 students that are coming back face-to-face. You know, we did make sure that it was clear that our abilities to socially distance wouldn't be as great as it was prior to that. However, you know, we will still definitely work toward that in all situations that we possibly can, so that we make sure that students are spread out, we make sure that people are following, students are following the proper protocols, teachers are following them as well. The good news, if there's any good news from any of this, is that we really feel that the overwhelming number of positive cases that we see here in our school district, as well as what we see across the state of Florida, do not begin in the schoolhouse. They are, they are, they are coming from somewhere else. And so it's just one thing that I just take the opportunity, and if you do the same thing, please do, is just to make sure that our employees, our students and families continue to observe these same type of protocols, whether it's wearing a mask in public or whether it's, you know, trying to keep yourself socially distanced when you're at gatherings, because that will also, I think, tremendously help to cut down on transmission. And again, it's not just this school district that is seeing very limited where it's, you know, where we feel the source is in a school. It is, it's outside of the school where you see these things happening, and so the more that we can do outside of the school will help us inside the schoolhouse as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, because this, we just have to really send our message, you know, out and to make people feel as comfortable as possible. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mrs. Gittens?
I have a, I have a question on that, Superintendent. I think some people were confused as well. If a case that originates outside of the school is, you know, found to be brought into the school, does that mean there's criteria for not quarantining? Does quarantining have to do with if it began in the school?
Quarantining comes in into play anytime you have a person that has been in a school that has been identified as a positive case. Doesn't necessarily say this is where that case originated. It just says that in this classroom, let's say, this student tested positive. And so then you look around, who came into contact, potentially came into contact with that student, and those are the students that are quarantined. So the contract, contact tracing, in terms of where did that positive case get that? You know, that's something that, again, the Department of Health does, and that's outside of our process. Our process just handles how, how do we, what do we do when we know of a positive case?
And I think the question came up from some people that we've had a lot of cases, but we haven't had a lot of quarantines. And so there was the question there, what constitutes or triggers that we do quarantine? Because there have been cases that have been, you know, in all of our schools, and that in some schools, it's repetitive, in some schools, it's very little, and that type of thing, so...
So just, I think the short answer there is if you have had a situation where a student is in contact with a positive case longer than 15 minutes, you know, like, let's say, sitting beside that person in the classroom for 45 minutes of instruction, whether or not they're wearing their mask, and they are required to wear masks, they still would be quarantined. So again, within six feet, I guess is the first thing I need to say, so within that six-feet protocol for greater than 15 minutes, contact with a positive case, that is a situation where we would quarantine. That's why the seating charts on buses, cafeterias, and in the classroom are so important, because if you can demonstrate that a student has not been within that six feet, has not been exposed for 15 minutes or more, you know, those students would not have to be quarantined. And again, that's...
Okay, so that answers the question as to how a classroom can have positive cases, but everyone is not quarantined.
Right, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we will meet again tomorrow for our briefing at 2:00 PM and our action meeting at 6:00. And at this time, seeing no other business to come before this body, this meeting is adjourned, and everyone home safe. Thank you.